Councilmember Malnar.
President.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.
Councilmember Turner. Vice Mayor Hugh.
Here.
Mayor Wires.
I'm here. All right, thank you. So, next item, or item number one. Ms. Borrow, could you introduce that, please, for us?
Biennial Certification of Land Use Assumptions, Infrastructure Improvements Plan, and Development Impact Fees.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here today to provide the first staff report will be our Director of Budget and Finance, Lisette Camacho.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. I'm actually going to turn over the presentation to Levi Gibson, the city's Assistant Budget and Finance Director, sitting to my left, and also Rebecca Chitwood, the city's controller.
Good afternoon, Mayor, councilmembers. We're going to turn over our presentation to the consultant who performed this review. Andrew is a senior manager with RafTelis and has been providing financial planning, impact fee, and utility rate consulting services to local governments in Arizona and the United States for more than 18 years. Andrew previously completed impact fee studies for many Arizona communities, including Phoenix, Peoria, Buckeye, Surprise, Fountain Hills, and Prescott. Andrew has led biennial impact fee audits for Avondale, Scottsdale, Phoenix, and now Glendale. Andrew is a board member of the Growth and Infrastructure Consortium and has served as the 2018 conference president held in Scottsdale. Andrew holds bachelor degrees in business administration, finance, and accounting from the University of Michigan Ann Arbor. We're going to turn the rest of the presentation over to Andrew.
Thanks, Levi. As was provided, I work and do impact fee-related work, including audits, and have done so for a number of years. Those of you who aren't familiar with RafTelis, the firm that I work for, we do work with municipal utilities and municipalities and local governments in financial management consulting throughout the country and certainly extensively throughout Arizona. And just highlighted, as Levi just indicated, some of the recent work that we had completed, including leading these types of audits for other communities. And each of the three communities we've worked with previously, I was either project manager, director, or in one case, quality assurance manager. So, heavily involved in all these processes. So, that, just a little bit of background there, and I've got a brief presentation. The topic is to, you know, present the preliminary findings of the biennial audit that we had just completed. But we've included a little bit of an overview of the relevant Arizona revised statutes. And then, just at a high level, and talking through some of the bounds or scope of the evaluation that we completed, some of the tools and resources, and ultimately, the approach and the process that we followed in advance with the overall findings. And certainly happy to address questions or answer things in greater detail as we go through here today. So, just, you know, before we get into the audit itself, just a quick kind of reminder for those that, you know, don't kind of work in the world of impact fees day over day, exactly what these are. These are one-time fees that we assess to new or increased development, and it's for growth-related expansionary infrastructure. It's restricted to capital, including eligible debt service, and certainly subject to pretty extensive requirements as laid out in Arizona revised statutes. In general, whether it's, you know, Arizona or other communities in other parts of the country, these types of fees can't be used for recurring expenses or operation and maintenance-type items. They're intended for capital. It's a fee-for-service. Some, you know, want to call it a tax, but it's really more of a fee and a commitment for service, kind of a, you know, a one-time fee to get new development on par with existing development. And there's pretty extensive updates and modifica-- that are, have to be fol-- I'm sorry, a pretty extensive process that has to be followed for updates or changes that are laid out in Arizona revised statutes. And certainly, you know, that's a topic for another day or, you know, another type of discussion when the fees are being set. But one of the requirements is certainly the audit. But it just, you know, as we evaluate what was done in the two-year period, just wanted to highlight that the fees that have been established, and once they're established, it does go through this extensive progress, process. And as is up on the screen right now in the slide, really highlights, is just the timeline from the notice of intent for the first public hearing to the implementation dates for impact fees is over 200 days. So, as part of that process to set the fees, it's quite extensive, very public. There are a lot of opportunities for stakeholders, for citizens, for the development community to provide input. And what results and what the city went through in 2018 to 19, ultimately, is the implementation of the fees themselves. And so, that's really more where the audit comes in, is, you know, as the fees are assessed and over, in this case, the two-year period, that's the area that we're, generally, we're looking at. So, the statute, statutory language is put up in a slide. Now, this is where we're starting getting into the audit itself. And this is the paragraph or the section of the statute that describes the process that leads us to, you know, why we're here today. As part of this, the city, you know, could have chosen to establish an advisory committee. Or if not, then an audit is required every, every two years. And so, as the city has not, had not previously established an advisory committee, that, like most communities in Arizona that have impact fees, they've opted to complete the audit every couple of years. So, when it comes to the audit itself, there's a few things that, you know, amidst all the words that are up there that ultimately were evaluating or being asked to evaluate as part of this process. The first is the progress of what's called the Infrastructure Improvements Plan. And as part of that, looking at the collection of revenues through impact fees and the use or the expenditure of those funds for the purposes that are documented within the Infrastructure Improvement Plan and the overall other documents. And then, in general, evaluating any inequities in implementing the plan or imposing the fees. The one way I like to state this a little bit more simply is, you know, did the city do what they said they were going to do? In terms of, here are the fees, were they assessed based on the fee schedules? Here are the improvements that are identified for the particular fee areas. Were those the type of improvements that were funded? And so, that helps provide a little bit of context in terms of, you know, the statutory requirement and what that has, you know, being audited or what is audited. In terms of the kind of the scope and the bounds of the study that we were asked to complete, this is done every two years. And so, we focused in on the two-year period of July 1, 2018, through June 30 of 2020. And we evaluated all the revenues and expenditures within the impact fee funds over that two-year period. As part of the programs that we looked at, the city assesses development impact fees in what we call seven fee categories that are enumerated here, cutting across fire, police, park and rec, streets, library, and then water and wastewater, or all of these necessary public services that the city is determining, gone through this process to establish these fees and has been assessing those. And we worked with some resources. The city files an annual report, also a requirement of the revised statutes, that reports on the cash, the fund balances, the revenues and the expenditures for each of these two fiscal years. And then, the fee studies themselves, both the process that culminated in 2019 as well as the previous process from 2014. And during the two-year audit period, we have fees that were established in '14 being assessed, and then, partway through the updated study, and those fees became effective and began being assessed as well. Also, we looked at city permits and actual results. So, overall, we had three areas of focus as part of the statutory requirement. First, we were looking at the land use assumptions, which is really the identification of the expected growth throughout the city in different land use classifications and potentially in different areas, as identified within the impact fee documents. The second area is on the revenue side and looking at the assessment of revenues and the fee schedules and reviewing, did they match the adopted fee schedules? And if they didn't, that led to some further investigation. I'm going to talk about that a little bit more in this presentation, the outcomes of that. And lastly, looking at the expenditures. And again, we looked at all the expenditures over the two-year period with, you know, ensuring that they met the requirements and limitations of impact fees as well as matched, you know, the requirements of those uses being identified within the two documents themselves. So, in terms of the approach, just breaking down a little bit further, we looked over the two-year period of actual versus projected growth and compared those results. When it came to the uses identified within the IIP and the expenses, we evaluated those against the documents to ensure that things were spent on the infrastructure that was eligible, and that all tied out and made sense. On the revenue side, we looked at each transaction over the two-year period, roughly 3,700 records over, I believe, around 700 permits. And so, you know, there were some additional criteria, some additional caveats, but ultimately, we, you know, matched up and independently verified the revenues. And if they didn't tie to what was assessed, we looked into things further to see, you know, if it was explained, if it was intentional, or if there was potential mistake or incorrect fee schedule that was applied. And then, we also looked at the expenditures over the same period to ensure that the uses were for things that were eligible for the expenditures. So, now, I want to get to the principal findings. And we got a handful of them that cut across the three areas of focus. So, the first one has to do with the growth that was forecasted in land use assumptions and how that compared over the two-year period to actual growth. You know, we, certainly was a difference, and something that the city should monitor and, as it has and continue to monitor, but don't really see it as an area of immediate concern. These are long-range growth projections. The fees are updated at least every five years. And as with growth projections, they don't always happen quite as linear as maybe, you know, they're anticipated each and every year. So, it's anticipated that there's going to be some ebbs and flows. Certainly something that the city should keep an eye on. And it may lead to updating, modifying, and land use assumptions earlier than the five-year period statute requires. But beyond that, that's really a limitation of that kind of overall finding is to monitor it and take action, you know, if things continue to lag behind what was anticipated for an additional period of time. Moving on to the revenue side and the evaluation of the revenues that were assessed. Some of this, I've kind of talked about it in big picture, but ultimately, you know, we replicated, based on the fee schedules that were in effect in the time period. And if we didn't match up to the assessed fees, which was the case initially with 160 records or 4% of the 3,700 records over the two-year period, then, we worked with the city to look into and understand, you know, why that may have been the case. And there were a lot of intentional reasons, whether it was a development agreement or another aspect of a 24-month delay, this grandfathering clause that's built into the statute. So, as we worked through and gathered additional information or additional understanding, and I guess I'll add, you know, some of it was just the information that we had received and how we had processed it. So, those 160 records were whittled down to six permits of the 700 where we identified that incorrect charges were assessed. The range in dollar amount from $64 for an amount that was overcharged with just an erroneous fee schedule being assessed to a mistake that was made and over-collection of $107,000 for a street development impact fee that was overcharged, just a manual fee that was processed where a mistake was made. And so, these six different kind of transactions, different explanations, some of them was just, you know, an error or the wrong fee schedule that was used. The first one for $107,000, city, is moving forward with the process to start a refund. The second one that's highlighted here for, that was overcharging for $34,000, that was identified by the city previously and already been refunded in June of 2019. So, that kind of, you know, that had been adjusted for or corrected. And then, the couple others here, they, you know, start becoming a smaller and smaller dollar amount. Not to say that it's insignificant by any means, but the next couple were just overcharged by a few hundred dollars, I'm sorry, undercharged by a few hundred dollars, overcharged by 64. And then, the final one was a matter of just the fee schedule for a single-family residential being used instead of multifamily residential, which resulted in over-collection of a few thousand dollars. So, this gives an idea on the revenue side, you know, for the, most part, and with very few exceptions, you know, the city assessed the correct fees, the intentional fees, and everything matched up as anticipated. Or as I said earlier, you know, the city adhered to what the city said they were going to do and what was laid out in the documents and through this two-year period. The last area had to do with the expenditures themselves. And as we went through and looked at the uses of funds, the DIF funds over the same two-year period, we didn't find any misuse or, you know, improper use of development impact fee funds. Things matched up with the guiding documents or in line with statutory requirements. There was one finding relative to a couple of the different reports that we worked with where we had observed a little bit of a difference between the two different reports. We've really chalked that up to timing. I mean, ultimately, you know, it's a small amount of difference. And then, within the expenditures themselves, and in addition, as is laid out here, what was spent and what was documented, it was about $6 million each of the fiscal years. And summarized on this table, the first year of our audit period, it was limited to three fee categories, library, parks, and streets, and cut across 23 different projects. And in the second year of our two-year period, fiscal year 1920, the expenditures cut across some additional categories, six in total, and were limited, in this case, a few, fewer projects at 19 instead of 23. But the expenditures were in line with state statutes, with the IIPs. And as I said earlier, really, the differences was just a different dollar amount and a couple of different reports that we had looked at. So, with that, that kind of concludes the sort of prepared remarks and certainly open for questions.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a question regarding these over or underpayments. Were these typically just clerical-type errors? Or were they formularia areas where a formula was incorrect and used but was incorrect? How does, how do they get calculated that they are incorrect?
It was, generally, there were human errors of those six. It was just whether the application of the fee schedule or customer class, or in one case, I mean, it was just a mathematical error, an input error on a manual calculation. And I guess, just to, you know, add to that a bit, I mean, there's a lot of the moving pieces where we're not just dealing with a fee schedule. I had referenced earlier this kind of 24-month timeline. After fees are implemented, there's up to 24 months before they become effective. Because that creates a situation where if you're in a particular development, your fees may be a little different than the standard fee schedule for a period of time, or subject to development agreement and special considerations. So, I just wanted to highlight, there's a lot of moving pieces here. And it's not just a matter of adopted fee schedule that changed, you know, once during the time period.
Thank you, Mayor. I would draw your attention to page 24, item 2.7, Adjustments and Feedback from the City. And it states, and I quote, "A majority of permit records subject to additional review were the result of lack of data used by Rafelis to calculate the appropriate charges. Although the data provided by the city included land use type, square footage of enclosed structures of non-residential properties was not available. This is particularly problematic with non-utility DIFs, which are calculated based on the square footage of enclosed structure for non-residential customers." Apparently, you identified this issue. How is the city, I guess I am looking for a response from the city as to how they're addressing the fact that they are not apparently securing square footage of enclosed structures of non-residential properties? Or maybe it isn't, maybe they are doing it, but then the question is, why was it not available?
Mayor, members of the council, we'll defer that question to Mr. Meadows.
Mayor? Councilmember Clark? For structures where square footage is required in the formulation, there are times where, just looking at a plan view, it's not quite evident whether it's just an extension of a canopy or does it have walls behind it? So, a quick calculation of the square footage would suggest the entire footprint. But when it comes to the final design plans, that's when we realize that, well, it was just a canopy and not entitled to be used in that formulation. But those are the kinds of examples. What could the city do differently? It's going to be a challenge because not all the information's available to us until the inspectors, for example, go out and they are reviewing it. So, it's more after the fact that we realize this portion of the square footage should not have been included. And that's how certain corrections were already made. So, out of the list of several hundred, well, thousands, actually, because this was just a sample right here, a lot of those corrections did happen on the fly. And what you're left with are what I would call stubby-finger kind of answer to why, why we have that situation. But to put it in perspective, what you've got at the end of this list, the six items, it's 1/100 of 1% of your collections for this time period. So, putting that in perspective, I think this, the system is working. And good thing that the audit is reminding us that even those six that were identified are now being fixed.
Thank you. Two questions. One, does the state mandate that square footage be used in determining the calculation of DIF fees? So, does this become problematical with regard to state regulations?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, I don't believe state regulation necessarily prescribes what unit to use in the calculation, as long as it meets the nexus, it meets the basis of whether you're using trip generation in certain cases, for example, with streets versus some others. But square footage is one of the most common ones used in non-utility-related calculations.
Okay. Then, secondly, a comment of the six. One was an overpayment by a residential customer. I believe it was in the, in excess of $3,000. And my first question is, has that customer been reimbursed at this point?
I would look to finance for that. I'm not quite sure whether it's in the works right now or already resolved.
Because for a citizen, $3,000 is a lot of money. And if it's, and if they overpaid, it sure would be nice to make sure they got it back promptly. So, I would like to know if they've been reimbursed.
Mayor, members of the council, this item is on page 25. I believe the $3,000 is an under-assessment, so the residential owes the city money.
I don't know why I thought it was an overpayment, but have we collected the money then, the $3,000?
Mayor, members of the council, we're working on collecting the $3,000.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm on page seven of the slides and under Findings. Under number one, where it says the difference between growth forecasted in the land use assumptions and actual growth should be monitored but is not an area of immediate concern. So, what would need to occur? What would need to happen for it to rise to a level of concern?
It, the growth period covers 15 years. So, we're looking at two out of 15 years. And it would need to, you know, lag below the anticipated growth for more than two years to rise to more of immediate concern. Because really, the land use assumption part is to identify the type of growth throughout the community that then drives the need to expand or add additional facilities. So, that, it kind of goes part and parcel. And at some point, if the growth lags far enough, then those, the need for those facilities maybe can be pushed out a little bit further. Or if there's growth in different parts of the community, then a fire station may be slotted over there. A lot of this auto-corrects itself because these are updated, the IIP, at least every five years. But I, you know, as we're looking at, it would have to be multiple years below the projections to really say, okay, you know, it's, here's an issue and the city may want to immediately update the land use assumption and the IIP.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If I could continue. So, and I imagine if we went out, you know, especially 2020, I would imagine we probably caught up with, with growth, with all the development we've had in the west area. But what, what is the, is it a percentage? I mean, how do you, what do you, what is the amount of falling short where you would need to be concerned? Is it 3%, 5%? I mean, how much?
There isn't like a set amount. And as we tracked, just to give an idea, a single-family residential over the two-year period was 60% of projected. So, I, you know, it was more than half. And some other land use, land uses, like multifamily exceeded the projections. So, then you just start getting into the different types of development. But across the board, you know, we're in that, you know, area where it's a little slower than anticipated, whether things have picked up or are growing faster. I mean, that's somewhat just the way that growth can go. And it's not as maybe as flatline as us taking that two-year period and analyzing it.
Okay, very good, thank you.
So, our next steps, Mayor and councilmembers, is we'll bring this back for a public hearing and for the council to formally accept the audit and the audit to be issued.
Borrow, can you introduce item number two?
Presentation Regarding Regulations for RV Parking in Operable Vehicle Storage and Vehicles Under Repair in Residential Zoning Districts.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide the staff report is Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. Here with me today is our code official, Tim Bowling, to answer any specific technical questions the council might have as we go through this presentation. I will be looking for consensus on several items today. And as a reminder, this is a continued conversation of items that have gone through the Code Review Committee. Several members of the council are on that committee as well as constituents from each of the districts. And this has been an ongoing conversation for a little over a year now. And each of these items that are coming forward today have been presented to staff, to the city attorney's office. And we've had many discussions with the city attorney about the implications of these changes. Some of these changes, for example, would make something that is currently legal today illegal after this is adopted, should the council choose to adopt it. And we just want to make it very clear that some of these changes have met with a lot of pushback from the community already, particularly as it surrounds RV parking. I've had a number of emails and phone calls and conversations with members or constituents from all districts about some of these changes. Many of those conversations were because the constituent was confused about what we're trying to do. But then, there were instances when the recommended language from the Code Review Committee would actually change how someone has used and has been able to use their property for a for a given number of years. And then again, as another reminder, when we implement language changes into the general city code as opposed to the zoning ordinance, this code is enforced as written and there is no opportunity for administrative relief or for a planning administrator to give a variance. And so, this would be enforced as written in the general code. So, when we're talking about RV parking and storage, there are a couple of changes that the new language would implement. And essentially, that change is that only one RV boat, trailer, camper, or something, utility trailer or something of that sort, would be allowed to be parked in the front of a residence. Of course, it would need to be on the property entirely. It could not overhang on the sidewalk or on an adjacent property. And it would need to be on an approved dustproof surface in an approved parking area, as we discussed in one of our last council workshops. The Code Review Committee also recommended some changes to the size limitations allowed. Those limitations are listed under the last hash mark, bullet pointed out. It is staff's recommendation that we not adopt those specific sizes. For example, a twelve-foot-high RV parked in a rear yard that is screened would stand above the six-foot screening requirement. So, whether it's twelve feet, thirteen feet, or thirteen and a half feet really isn't going to make a significant difference. And then, of course, whether it's forty feet in length or forty-two feet in length really wouldn't make much of a difference if it's in the screened rear yard. If it's parked at the front of the residence, as long as it doesn't overhang on the sidewalk or create any other safety concerns for our first responders that might need to gain access to a rear yard, for example, then the size of the RV, trailer, boat, whatever it might be, should not necessarily be limited to specifically what's listed on the slide.
Mayor, I'd like to make a comment on that. And I agree with the recommendation by the staff regarding not including those parameters within the guidelines because I had a conversation recently with individuals who have indicated that twelve-foot is not really necessarily standard for large RVs. Thirteen and a half is the U.S. road standard. And so, eliminating the twelve-foot and basically eliminating all these others, as long as it will fit in the front yard in the appropriate guidelines on a parking space that is appropriate, I don't have a problem with that. And again, I just want to reiterate to the public that may be watching today that we're only speaking about parking in the front yard, not on a side yard, not on the backyard. And I know Mr. St. John referenced that. But I want to reemphasize, we're not talking about the backyard or the side yard. If you have a gated side yard and you park your RVs back there, this does not apply to you in that sense.
Mayor, to continue. Again, the big change here would be that it only allows one of these types of vehicles to be parked visibly from the front of the residence. As Councilmember Malinar just pointed out, if it's behind a screened side yard or in a rear yard that's screened, not visible from beyond the boundary of the lot, if you will, then it would not be of concern. I know that there are residents within our city that have both a utility trailer and, let's say, a camper trailer that they park at the front of the residence. The utility trailer is part of their business. The camper is for recreation. This would limit their ability to park either or in the front of their residence. The other would need to be parked behind a screened side yard or in the rear yard under this new language. So, that, in my opinion, is a significant change.
Mayor? Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, just want to clarify. Can you define rural when we say rural? Can you define that?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama. Rural residential or specifically zoned lots, which were at one time, I should say, on the outskirts of the city, but now can be part of what we'd consider inner parts of the city.
So, that's my point there. When we define rural, we're becoming a much larger city and those rural areas are going away. So, they'll remain rural if they're zoned that way, correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, that's correct. If they're zoned rural residential, as long as they don't initiate a rezoning application, the city would not move in to rezone them.
So, with that said, you're saying here that an RV is permitted in a screened rear yard, rural residential exempted. So, if there's a home with its backyard facing a street, viewable from the street, you can't have a screen. But what is the appropriate surface that that RV needs to be parked on? Can't be grass or dirt, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama. We've had discussions about whether we want to attempt to control the approved parking surface in a rear yard. And it is the recommendation of everyone that I've talked to that we don't try to control that.
But here you say it has to be on an approved surface. So, what is that improved surface?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama. The requirements for an approved surface would be in a space visible from the front of the property. It would not include a screened side yard or rear yard, screened or unscreened for the zoning district.
So, then, I just want to be clear because I brought a couple of these to you and they're still yet to be addressed. Can you park one or more RVs thirty, forty feet in a backyard that faces an actual street that is not required to be screened or can't be screened and is on dirt or grass? Is that allowable?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama. It is allowable as long as the homeowner is the owner of those RVs and/or trailers, utility trailers, whatever it might be.
Okay. If they're the owners and then the improved surface is voided if it's in the backyard, is what I'm hearing?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, that is correct.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, let me take that a step further. So long as they're the owner, do they have to have license plates, current license plates in the backyard?
Mayor, they do not.
Okay, so, how is the city going to go and verify that that is owned by the owner or someone else?
Mayor, that is one of the challenges that we face when it comes to complaints about RVs parked, visibly parked, in a rear unscreened rural residential yard. We can view the yard beyond the boundaries of the lot. And any indication that we have of a license plate or registration, we can make note of and attempt to identify the registered owner based on that registration. But if it doesn't have a license plate, then it makes it next to impossible to verify who the owner is. So, typically, we have a conversation with the homeowner and hope they're honest with us.
And we're not going to fly drones around and try to get pictures and...
Mayor, that's correct. We will not do that for enforcement.
So, with that said, going back to what was stated earlier, if somebody has a camper trailer, a tent trailer, some sort of camping, but they also have a flatbed trailer that they use because they don't own a pickup truck, that couldn't be allowed in the front, period.
Mayor, that's correct. Under the recommended language from the Code Review Committee, that would be correct.
So, my next question is going to be to the attorney. If people have been doing this for decades and we now come up with a law that says they can't do it, is that taken and is the city liable to be sued?
Mayor and council, that's, in to follow what Mr. St. John led with, that is going to be your greatest challenge with this, is that there is behavior now that occurs that is compliant with your code. And you are now making it non-compliant with your code. And so, it could be subject to a challenge. And in some instances, it would be due to the evidentiary standards and the challenges faced with enforcement. It would be, we would have to, of course, we would defend the council's actions. But again, we are up against behavior that's existed for years. And so, there would be some significant challenges, quite possibly.
You didn't exactly answer my question. You did what attorneys do, you were all over it. There was a part in here, I don't remember where it's seen it. Oh, the general city code is enforced as written and does not allow for variances, relief, or grandfathered rights. So, I'm going to make the assumption that your answer was, yeah, we probably would get sued. Potentially, we would probably lose. I'm not trying to feed words into your mouth, but I'm just trying to clarify it.
Mayor and council, that's the reality, yes. Because keeping in mind when you're dealing with code enforcement, it's the frustration of the council, it's the frustration of staff, but there are very fact-specific scenarios for each specific parcel of property. And so, there is a likelihood that we could get sued and we would not prevail.
Mayor, if I may add to that?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This was, one of the reasons why we're talking about making these changes in the general code as opposed to the zoning ordinance is the Fountain Hills case. So, Fountain Hills, as you know, and we discussed in our last workshop a few weeks ago now, changed what was allowable to be parked in the front of properties in their city. And they were sued. And the judge basically found that a change in the general code did not diminish property value as opposed to a change in the zoning ordinance, which would have. And so, Fountain Hills won the lawsuit based on the fact that the change was in the general code, not in the zoning ordinance. And the judge noted in his ruling that had they made the change in the zoning ordinance, exact same language, but in the zoning ordinance instead of the general code, the judge would have sided with the homeowner and said that it was a diminished value or a diminished rights issue. And the city would have been liable for whatever property value diminished there was. That's the primary reason why we're asking for these changes in the general city code is to avoid losing a lawsuit like that. Now, to the city attorney's point, you never know what a judge is going to do. So, we could absolutely get sued and we could lose a lawsuit. But case law has shown that changes in the general city code fare far better in lawsuit than changes in the zoning ordinance that diminish rights. And that's why we're doing things the way we are. Just wanted to bring that back up as a point of clarity.
All right. Well, and I do understand that unless you get that same judge, there's no guarantees on any of it. At the same time, we're going to take a lot of citizens that are wonderful citizens, that have been living a certain way for a long time, that aren't making their neighbors angry, and we're going to make them angry to try to appease some people that are upset about what their neighbors are doing. You know, this is one of the things that makes it unpleasant being on this council. We have to deal with it. But I can't support this. I just personally cannot support this.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. So, Mr. St. John, the issue is, for me, on some of our properties in Glendale, some homes, their front yard, their immediate front yard faced someone's immediate backyard. And when those properties are that close, you're having to see where people are storing utility trailers, RVs, camp trailers, cars, Jeeps, flatbeds. And those people have to see that. And then, so, the code allows them to put up a screen. So, now you've got this green or blue screening that the neighbor has to see now instead of the RVs. You can still see the top. So, how do we deal with that?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, I don't have a solution to that issue. I apologize. I understand the concern. Fortunately, I think that situation is few and far between, although it does exist in several locations within the city. I think that controlling the blight issues in someone's backyard is a very difficult task. And so, and I don't have an answer other than from a health and safety perspective. And so, if they've got an overgrowth of vegetation that's causing rodents infestations that are now creating safety issues for surrounding neighbors, we can deal with that, stagnant swimming pools, things of that nature. From a health and safety perspective, we can deal with those things. From an aesthetics or a blight issue concern, it becomes much more difficult to deal with what occurs in someone's backyard.
Yeah, I think the concerns I've sent you are much greater concerned than what you explained, but I understand. And then, the fact that cities, not just Glendale, but we neglect to enforce things and then, all of a sudden, it comes to us and we start to enforce it, this is the right thing to do, is to create new code laws that will address and allow us to start. But if we're going to do this and it passes and we neglect to do our job, we're going to be right back at it in five, ten years from now saying, hey, we might get sued, we can't do it. I'm just asking the city to make sure that we enforce the code. So, creating stringent codes is going to be helpful. Take people off, but make some people happy. Thank you.
Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. St. John, have you guys done like an initial assessment on how many properties really would even be affected by this? I would think it would be very few.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov. I'm not aware of an assessment, a specific assessment that's been done, but I think Mr. Bowling can speak to the number of properties, at least anecdotally, they think would be impacted by this change. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bowling.
Mayor, members of the council. From the feedback that we got and from what we see in the community, I, this will affect a large number of properties.
Hold your microphone up a little bit.
There you go. We think that this will affect a large number of properties that have more than one trailer or RV parked in their front yard.
A lot? Did he say a lot? I would imagine, though, I guess, I mean, I'm thinking that if you're already parking in the front yard, it's probably certain that you don't have an HOA. So, I mean, would they be able just to move, especially if we're abandoning the height issue, you could move them into a side yard or a backyard with little or no, unless your lot's not wide enough and that might be why they're parking in the front yard, that they just don't have the space to get whatever it is they're parking in there. So, I was thinking it would be just very few. A lot could be problematic. I'd like to hear from the Code Review Committee, though. You know, I mean, this is being recommended to us by the Code Review Committee. So, I'd like to hear from them, if that's okay with everybody else. Why are we, you know, why are they recommending this?
As...
Go ahead.
As chair of that committee, I can speak to, I mean, we spent probably over a year talking about parking. We had thousands of examples brought to us, maybe not thousands, hundreds. And we addressed it because there is a real concern out there that if we do nothing, and even under current code, many things that are being done may not be correctly done. And so, a neighbor sees that happen and then they do it. And then, another neighbor sees them do it and then they do it. And so, what's happened is, it didn't used to be kosher to park one, two, three, four, five recreation vehicles on a front yard. Under current code, as long as they're parked properly and licensed, you can do that. But neighbors are saying, we don't think that's appropriate for our neighborhoods to have that many vehicles, that many recreation vehicles parked in a front yard. And the Code Committee discussed this at length. And we agreed with that, that there is an issue here that we need to address. And there are people that are parking multiple vehicles on front yards that is causing, in the opinions of that neighborhood, a blight-looking issue. And that's the reason why we're bringing it forward. We want to see Glendale improve its overall appearance, to make Glendale a better quality of life for the residents who live here. And this will restrict some people. I agree with that. There are some people that do park several RVs in their front yard. But is that appropriate? That's what we're talking about here. The Code Committee discussed that at length and determined that that isn't appropriate based on the feedback that we received from the residents, based on complaints the Code Department was receiving, that it's causing more problems. And so, we wanted to address that. And that's basically where this came from.
Yeah, let me just try to get this thought out. So, your question is, would it affect lots of people or just a few? I think where people are looking at this differently is you probably have a few complaints. is you probably have a few complaints. I don't think you have hundreds of complaints. Is that accurate?
Mayor, I think that's accurate. We don't get a ton of complaints on this specific issue, but we do have hundreds of properties that have more than one trailer RV.
And that was exactly the point I was trying to make. So, there, you're, you're trying to take everybody in the entire city that doesn't have an HOA, that doesn't already regulate it, and you're trying to say you can only have one vehicle out front, which I think is unfair to our citizens when we've allowed them to do it. Now, there are extremes where you may have three or four or five, and I would say maybe the, maybe there should be more looked at. If you have more than three vehicles parked in the front or in the street of trailers or RVs, that's where we're gonna draw the line. But to say a total of two, I think is, a total of one, I think is, is, is not being fair.
And you're talking RV vehicles only?
I don't like the word RV, because RV recreational vehicle, I don't look at as a boat trailer as an RV, but you do. And I think that's the way the code is looking at it. Anything other than your primary driving vehicle to and from work, if it's a camper, if it's a boat, if it's a ATV trailer, a landscape trailer, a motorcycle trailer, any of those, you're looking at as an RV, is that correct? And, and there are people that will have a, a single axle trailer that they might use for landscaping business, that you're now gonna count that, and they may have a boat for recreation, and we're gonna say you can't have two? Livelihood is one, recreation is a quality of life issue. I don't wanna take that away from them. But if they had four, I'd say, you know, okay, now that's, that's getting a little extreme. Maybe you need to go find a, a lot somewhere and, and store your stuff in a, in a storage lot. I think we'd have less people, and I don't think the average person complains over two trailers. But I think if they got four motorhomes out front, yeah, they're, it's probably a business, more than likely. Probably, and, and that's just my thought. But I, I think, I think there's a compromise in there that you could probably win my, my decision on, but, but I can't do it over two vehicles. I drove through everybody's district when this thing first started getting hot and heavy. Lauren's was probably the least where you found issues, although I did find some. And Jamie's, and Ian's district, and Bart's district, a lot. And Joyce, we've got a lot of acreage properties, so we've seen a lot, but it didn't seem to be as noticeable because they're larger homes. Everybody's got the issue. And, and to think that the citizens are not gonna get upset about this, I think we're all crazy. They'll get upset, I guarantee you. But I think there's a good compromise if you would allow more vehicles, maybe, maybe no more than three. I think, I think could be a good compromise. That's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mayor. I do sit on the Code Committee, and I supported the recommendations and continue to support the recommendations of the Code Committee as presented by Mr. St. John today. I, I think we're missing, or at least need to think about something. The last time our codes were revised was in 1993. That was 18 years ago. The character of Glendale has changed over those 18 years. I can remember the former mayor resenting the fact that the city was characterized as six and sticks, cows and plows. That was a favorite complaint and saying of hers. I think as we become more urbanized, people forget that they have to be sensitive to what their neighbors are viewing as well. Now, it doesn't seem to be, as the mayor suggested, a concern in HOAs. So as more HOAs come on board, that problem kind of solves itself. Or for large lot properties such as the fact, such as the ones that the mayor and I enjoy. But I think just because we've done something, we're allowed something to occur for the past 20 years, and the city has become more urbanized, does not mean that we turn a blind eye to it and allow it to continue. At some point, you have to bite the bullet and say, look, do we wanna look like junkyard, or do we want to improve the visual aspect of our city? And that's what a lot of these code revisions are dedicated to, is based on long histories of citizen complaints about various issues, one of which has been parking, specifically RV parking, whether it's a toy hauler, or a camper, or whatever. How many vehicles do you need to park in your front yard before you look like a junkyard? Many of us feel that it needs to be limited. I'm not sure three is the answer. I could maybe live with two, but certainly not three. I think three is pushing the limit. So if there's any kind of compromise, I, I certainly wouldn't object to one additional vehicle. But beyond that, I'm, I'm not willing to compromise. I think this is the right thing to do for Glendale at this time. We either bite the bullet, make a concerted effort to clean up our neighborhoods, or we throw in the towel and let things continue exactly the way they have been, which characterizes the entire city and our reputation. And, and one last point, no, we are not getting rid of RV vehicles, banning RV vehicles. That was the most common email and call that I got since this issue surfaced. People calling me hysterically saying, are you banning RV vehicle parking? And I, and patiently you explain, no, that's not the case. So no, we are not banning RV vehicle parking in Glendale. But we do think it's time that even people who have behaved in a certain way for many years become more sensitive to the concerns of their neighbors and, and what they're doing to property values surrounding them as well as their own. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Having served on the, the Code Subcommittee too, I know that this was important to the members of the committee that brought it forward, and, and has been said so many examples of the blight that it creates in our neighborhoods. I've heard from many residents, even prior to this week, and many more this week, and followed some online conversations about this as well. And, and it's important that people understand, as Councilmember Clark said, we are not trying to ban, you know, totally ban RV parking. And that was a, a mis-assumption that got put out there and spread around. That's never been our intent. Our intent has been to do something reasonable that respected the, the rights of both people that have them and the people who don't. The calls to my office have probably ended up being about 50/50. I've certainly had a lot of people who've called and said, "Councilmember, we're glad you're doing something about this." They're just, they're everywhere. They're blocking our view, our enjoyment of our yard. They're clogging our streets and that sort of thing. Many of the people who called in were upset. Once they understood the parameters that we were working with, one, one RV in the space in front of your driveway, or your carport or garage, or the space next to it, everything else in a side or rear yard, people became quite comfortable with it. There are plenty of RVs out there, but I think far and away, most of them are single, just one, and, and would continue to be allowed. Residents have said things to me along the lines of, if they wanted to live in a storage yard, they would have moved to a storage yard. This is their residential neighborhood. They want it to maintain its, its residential flavor. And maintaining it is what's extremely important here. If we don't do something, and do something in this timeframe, it's only going to proliferate. We've put more effort and energy and given as, as good a look at this as I think that we'll be able to have, as, you know, that we've had in the past or that we would be able to accomplish in the future. And citizens are wanting us to take some reasonable steps. And as long as we keep in mind that we're really only dealing with regular neighborhoods, not the, not the large lot ag neighborhoods of an acre or more, or even, even some that are smaller but are zoned, rural residential. Those are not going to be negatively impacted by this, I don't believe. It's just our regular neighborhoods where our regular families live, and they will be allowed to have one recreational vehicle, whether that happens to be the motorhome, a travel trailer, a pop-up trailer, a boat presumably on a trailer, or a trailer full of ATVs. That's what we're looking at. And, and most people feel that that's more than reasonable. And if they have additional vehicles or trailers, they need to find a way to accommodate the neighborhood by storing them either in the side yard, rear yard, or in their garage. And, and I don't find that unreasonable, and the neighbors that have called me don't either. We have situations where we, we think about, well, all of these people who maybe have had two or three now, might have to make a change. And it's true, they might. The, but again, depending on the conversation about, you know, people have been, already been doing, you know, do they have a vested right in it? That may not be the case. But if we adopt this, at least we can stop it from proliferating. But it's not just about, what about the, really, I believe, a handful of people who have more than one, but what about the neighbors that have none and are enjoying a pleasant view, that nice residential street, and then somebody moves in and brings three, four of these with them, and they're parked in the driveways and on the street? Now their quality of life has been diminished. What rights do they have? I think they should have rights. I think they have a right to live in a residential environment, and that doesn't include, you know, looking out your front window and seeing a storage yard. There are a few isolated, or semi-isolated cases of, you know, front yards facing backyards and things like that that will be more difficult to deal with. But we can't legislate for the exception. We need to, to legislate for the rule and figure out how to manage the exceptions. And, that, again, the neighbors that have talked to me are saying one of two things. Either stop this and get rid of them completely, or that what we're, what we're advocating here, the one with the restrictions, is reasonable. And that's, so I can support what we're talking about so far. The restrictions as far as staff not recommending that we stick to the length and the width and height requirements, I suppose that could be looked as, as hair splitting, you know? They don't make them, and I'll defer to the mayor on this, you know, they, he knows how long they make a, a RV, a fifth-wheel trailer, you know, with a toy hauler backend and that sort of thing. But, you know, again, once you're at 40 feet, you know, I don't think they make them 60-foot long, do they? Here, it's your area of expertise. But, so, if, that to me is not the issue, if there's a limited number of them. But I think that's what we need to work on, is limiting the number. If we want to accept out of this landscape trailers, for instance, that would be something worth considering if that helps get us to making progress. Landscape trailers, by and large, in my experience, are not home all day long, every day of the week, like a boat in your driveway, or a, a travel trailer in your driveway, or a motorhome in your driveway is. So at least there's some relief. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Got a photo here, I'll show everyone, but, Mayor, you said it right. Demographically, the El Cattle district is one of the worst, and the worst offenders. And just because our staff says that we're not, we don't receive a lot of calls, but we have a lot of issues, it doesn't mean we just ignore it. That's our job. That's what municipalities do. They go out and they observe, and then they act. That's exactly what you're doing. If there's a neighborhood that my district would aspire to be, it would be Councilmember Tomachoff's neighborhood. We don't have those kind of problems there. Give me the tools. Give my district the tools to do that. Seriously. Our neighborhood deserves the right to be like some of the northern neighborhoods. Lack of blight. We deserve that. I will deal with the constituents who are not happy, and I'll gladly deal with the constituents who are happy. But give me those tools. The tools are right here. They're right here in the book. Give me the tools to clean up our neighborhood. Now, I know Councilmember Turner, and Councilmember Malnar, and Ian Hugh, or Councilmember Hugh, and the mayor have some neighborhoods the same, but my district is bad. And I get calls all the time. It's not what you're listening to on the phone, guys. It's, it's what you're seeing out there. Get in my pickup, I'll show you. This is what we're trying to resolve. One yard, three RVs, truck and a car, and there's a boat that you can't see. This is what we're trying to resolve. Give me the tools to do that, please. Give me the right and the opportunity to clean up our neighborhood. That's all we're asking. Our Code Committee did a really good job. It's a hard thing to do, but we have to do it. If we don't start today, my district and other districts will never get cleaned up. There's an election every year, can hold me accountable. I'll deal with it. But please give me the tools to clean up the blight in my neighborhood. That's all I'm asking. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
And I, I wanna state again, there are a lot of people who pull trailers for work. Their livelihoods. I, I would strongly recommend that this council think seriously about, if you're, if you're hell-bent on doing this, at least allow for a minimum of two vehicles. I still think three would be better, but at least two. There are small mom-and-pop operations, and, and landscape seems to be the theme today, that I know have got two pickup trucks and two trailers, 'cause the dad and the son both drive the trucks when they go to work. And so if you have two of those, we gonna say, no, you can't run that anymore? It's, housing has gotten so expensive, which Councilmember Tomachoff can attest to, there are people that won't be able to move. They simply cannot. They'll have to stay where they're at because of, of the cost of, of living, and then you're gonna take away their opportunity to work? I think that's, I think that's wrong. I would, I would ask this council, please consider at least making this two vehicles instead of one. I still don't think that's enough, but I, I could support that. But without that, I can't support it at all.
Thank you, Mayor. That's kind of what, what I wanted to bring up was the, the issue of the, of a work trailer, whether it's landscape, or, you know, handyman, that kind of, you know, carpet layers, poultry, lots of different trades pull trailers. You probably, your guys probably pull trailers, I would imagine, for flooring and things like that. So, number one, I, I agree. I think there should maybe be an exemption for that, especially because the trailer may or may not be owned by the person who's parking it in front of their house. They may be working, may be owned by an LLC, may be owned by the owner of the business. That may not be their trailer that they pull to work every day. So I think we need to at least think about that. And then I wanted to ask, what about like a van? Like, you know, AC guys and other guys have, like, cargo vans, or is that, is that, does that apply here as well?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, there are parts of the code that deal with commercial vehicles and what's allowed to be parked and/or stored on residential properties, and it's limited to one at this time? As long, and, pardon me, as long as it meets the appropriate gross vehicle weight rating?
Okay, so if you had an, and a lot of lawns and businesses pull in enclosed trailer because that's how they can secure their tools and equipment to keep them from being stolen. So if you have a van and then you pull a trailer, how would, how would that, is that two commercial vehicles and you wouldn't be allowed, or?
Two separate registrations.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, we're getting more specific than I, than I have an understanding of, so I'm gonna defer to Mr. Bowling.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The, the commercial vehicle would be a vehicle. The trailer is a separate category. So if this was passed, he'd be, he'd be able to drive the commercial vehicle, the van, and pull a trailer, a utility trailer, and park one trailer in front of his property.
So, I mean, would it be possible, and would the Code Committee be, be open to the idea of saying we, I agree, I wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't wanna have to look at that. I mean, and now, the difference in my district, just so that Councilmember Aldama understands, is 99% of this enforcement is done by the HOAs, and the, and we pay for, we pay for that enforcement. It's not free to us. We pay hundreds of dollars a year for the HOA, and they go out and do the enforcement, and they sign, and they find, and all of that stuff. So, it's not something the city does. Not saying that it doesn't need to be done. I agree with you. If I lived someplace where there was no HOA, and I had to look at that every day, I would feel like my property value is being affected by it being allowed. So I agree with you that we need to do something about it. But I wouldn't wanna put somebody who's trying to make a living by pulling a trailer enclosed or not enclosed, whatever the case may be, and they have an RV and they need that trailer for work. So, could we put a, I don't wanna say loophole, but an exception or something in there for a trailer that's operable, licensed, and that's used for the, the occupants', you know, employment? for a trailer that's operable, licensed, and that's used for the, the occupant's, you know, employment? Okay, so it could be two RVs then? Two RVs, or wanna be?
What they're calling a RV is anything, a trailer, boat, any of that shit.
Well, my other, my other issue, Mayor, if I, is that the, the, the work trailer may not, because this says must, uh, be owned by the homeowner or renter, and so I thought that might be an issue, because the trailer may not belong to the person who lives there. So that might be a problem too, is that it might be registered to an LLC or something else, and might not even belong to the occupant, but it should still be allowed. So, if we're going to allow it.
I, I just wanna get a point of clarification. We are talk, there, there's a section that deals with parking later on. We haven't got to yet. It seems to me that we're jumping the, the gun here a little bit. Are we talking about RV parking? Are we saying a, a work trailer is an RV? Because that's what we're talking about here. It, I thought that was under other vehicles, and other parking. What we're talking about is RV parking only. Is that correct or not correct?
Mayor Councilmember, uh, Malnar, there is a definition that was approved by council in a voting meeting about a month and a half ago for recreational vehicle that does not include utility trailers. It is, uh, those vehicles that are used for recreation, if you will. So it does include mobile homes, or mini motorhomes, motorhomes, boats, camper trailers, things of that nature, but it does not include utility trailers. Utility trailers is covered under a separate section of the code.
Okay, and that's my point, is we're talking about RVs right now. And we can, I, I, I would agree that maybe we do allow an exception, and I don't think this is saying that you can't park an RV and a, a work trailer in your driveway. I don't think that says what we've ta, covered so far, under RV. Is that correct?
Mayor Councilmember Malnar, I would need to refer to the definition of a utility trailer. So if you give me just a second, or maybe Mr. Bowling has that answer at, at hand.
No, and I'd, I'd like clarification. If it's a trailer with RV, uh, recreational vehicles in it, is that an RV? I think it is.
That's what we wanna see, what the definition is. I, I just want, the point I'm trying to make here is, is we're talking about RVs only right now. We haven't got to the next sections, which is in the last of this report, is, it talks about, uh, work trucks and, and utility trailers, I believe, and that's, that's later. What we're talking about is RV, and if we change the RV to two, then that'll be two plus whatever we give them under their work. That means they can park two RVs, plus their work truck, uh, and their work trailer, or whatever on their, and, and that's not, I don't think, the intent here.
If they're doing that, uh, I'd, I'd like to point out that there's a lot of people that use flatbed trailers for work five days a week. And then they'll unload the trailer with whatever they're hauling, if they're doing carpet, whatever they're doing. A lot of times they'll throw a motorcycle on it, and they'll go out to the desert. Uh, there's this great, great man-matched rush to Sturgis, South Dakota, every year in, uh, early August, uh, where people migrate, and they take all their trailers up to South Dakota for this big trailer, really, and then some guys take your motorcycles with them. That's, that's a bad joke, but, and they use those same trailers that they use for work all year long, so.
To me, that's a work trailer.
You can't.
Not an RV.
But you can't really distinguish that, because a lot of them aren't even marked. Most of them don't even have commercial plates on them.
Well, but when the code compliance person goes up and talks to them, they can say, this is my work trailer, and I use it a little bit for recreation. I mean, I, I, I think code is gonna be smart enough to know that and be able to, uh, adjudicate it accordingly. Anyway, let's see if we have an answer.
Mayor Councilmember Ald, uh, Malnar, rather, uh, there is not a specific definition of utility trailer in the code as it's written today. Uh, it does allow for utility trailers to be parked at the front of the residence if there is not access to a screened side or your rear yard. It allows for one. And there are some limitations on the size that's allowed, as it's written in the code. But it does not clearly define what a utility trailer is and what makes a utility-looking trailer a recreation vehicle. Because I do agree that, uh, flatbeds and utility trailers meant to, uh, move ATVs, for example, uh, could look like a utility trailer, but are actually recreation.
And, and I, I do wanna clarify, there is actually a definition of utility trailer. It's a brand name, and they're semi-trailers. So the state of Arizona doesn't identify them as utility trailers. They identify them as box trailers, or flatbed trailers, or car auto transport trailers.
Uh, if I may, Mayor, um, what I'd like to do then is, continuing on that conversation, I, I would like to see us move forward on the RV part and discuss, uh, it sounds like we need to get a better definition of utility trailer, so that we don't have a con-
It's a semi-trailer, it's what a utility trailer actually is.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, utility trailer can be a, it can be a flatbed, or it can be a cargo trailer would, is a utility trailer.
Legal definition, no.
Okay, but I don't know what we have.
Statutes, no.
I don't know what we have, and I guess we, we just need to define that in our code. That's what I'm suggesting. So what I'm suggesting here is, is we're talking about RVs. Do we want to say that we're not talking about a utility trailer at this point in time? Uh, so that we can identify that, and then move forward with where we're at, and?
What, what if you simplify it and just simply say, no more than two vehicles in a combination of RV or, uh, flatbed-type trailer?
I, I wouldn't have a problem with that, because I believe that's gonna be allowed under a work trailer anyway, so I wouldn't have a problem with that.
See, and I don't care whether you call it a work trailer or a recreational trailer. To me, it makes no difference, if, if we know the total amount that we will allow. So whether it's a motorhome with a trailer, two trailers, two motorhomes, I don't really care, but, but limit the amount total that, that this council could come up with. And if that's two, that, we're gonna get, we're gonna solve a lot of problems. We're still gonna have people angry, but a lot less people angry.
Uh, let's hear from the rest of the council.
Just trying to find a compromise that everybody could live with.
Mayor. I, I, I would just, this is like, uh, an ancillary thought to this whole discussion. But this is one of the reasons why I don't particularly like subdivisions that have forty-five wide lots, forty-five feet wide lots. You can't even put in an RV gate to be, allow a person to park a vehicle in the backyard, because there's not enough room on the side yards for a gate. Um, that's just an, an extra thought, but, but I wanted to echo what Councilmember Malnar said. We are talking about RV vehicles right now. We're not talking about work trucks or utility vehicles for work. We're talking strictly about RV vehicles. And how many we can park in a driveway, or on the front yard in some cases. And I think we should stick to that discussion, and then, and then deal with the issue of utility vehicles, if necessary, in a subsequent discussion.
And, and I, I think this is gonna be impossible unless we have an actual definition of what you guys are calling an RV. Because a, a, a trailer with an overhead camper on it is an RV, but it's also a flatbed trailer with an overhead camper. People do that all the time. They'll set the overhead camper on it and pull it like a travel trailer, and then when they get home, they take it off and set it on the ground, and then use the trailer for work. They're both manufactured. So I, I think we better get a, a, a much more positive definition of, of what an RV is and, and trailers in the combination. But again, I think this, I think the easy solution is limit it to no more than two in a combination of, of any, any way you wanna go. I think that solves the problem.
It might, if one of those is a, I'll call it a utility trailer, small U. The, the problem we have here is utility trailer, capital U, is a trade name, just like Kleenex, so. We don't wanna get confused and just restrict that brand of trailer, so. But if we consider for our sake of our conversation, utility, small U, is a, is what we're talking about. So those trailers that we're familiar with. If one of them, if we allow two, and one of them is that, which I think is what we would be allowing if we go with allowing one RV, because that is a commercial or a work trailer, and that's regulated elsewhere, not in, in this, uh, section we're talking about, that would be okay. But to allow two, and one of them is a, a forty or forty-five-foot motorhome, and the other is a, a toy hauler just as long, or a travel trailer, or even a, a twenty-foot flatbed trailer loaded with, you know, two ATVs and two Rangers or something, that sit there all day long, that's, that's not what our, our residents want. A work trailer, utility trailer, that comes and goes and isn't there all day long, that's fine. That, that's not really where the objection people have. It's, it's this, they're sitting there. It's a storage yard. There's, they're literally being stored in their driveways until the next time they go on a vacation or, or take a long weekend. And that's, that's the, that's where the friction is, at least in my experience in my district.
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, personally, I don't find it horrible that I have to look at an RV anyplace, in my neighbor's driveway, or, or parked in front of a house. But so if you, back what you're trying to talk about, if you have an RV, and it's parked, and, and you have a sixteen-foot trailer with a boat on it, is that two RVs?
Mayor Councilmember Hugh, yes.
Hey, that's, yeah, I kinda go along with maybe just with the limit of, of two then, saying you can have two, but it had to be called two RVs parked in the front yard. I, I don't have a problem with that, but, um, I, I've driven my neighborhood, and, and, Councilmember Dominar, we, we kinda have neighborhoods alike, and, and share a lot of, a, a lot of things, but, um, when I, when we get to the next section of cars parked, that's probably gonna be even more difficult. But, yeah, I don't have a problem with, with two.
Mayor. I, I, as I said previously, I would accept two. Better to get something that limits the proliferation of RVs, multiple, multiple RVs of any sort parked in a front yard. So limiting it to two seems to be a workable compromise at this point. It's at least achieving, um, a modicum of what we and the Code Review Committee had, had worked towards. So, um, I, I, again, support two RV vehicles, but that's it. Don't push the envelope. Thank you.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. I, I'm just going back to the definition of a, uh, RV. An RV is not putting a camp trailer from the back of a pickup truck onto a U, utility trailer. An RV is a recreational vehicle, motorized or not motorized, could be towed, that is manufactured as one unit to sleep in or live in. It's not a camper you remove and put on there, you tow it, and then you take it off, put on your pickup truck. That's not, that's not, that's not it. I would be open to allowing a single RV and a trailer, sixteen-foot trailer, or a boat. I think that's okay, but to have more than one RV manufactured, uh, towable or power-driven RV, that's just too many. But I'm okay if somebody owns an RV and a, and a boat. I'm, heck, yeah. Or if it's a trailer and motorcycles, it's fine.
Uh, and I believe, um, and I agree with you, Councilmember. The problem is, is in the definition and in the enforcement, I believe. And we, we, we can't define it so finely that we can distinguish between a boat, RV. I mean, I guess we could if we wanted to make the code another ten pages long. Uh, but I think we wanna simplify it, make it easy for, for the residents to understand. And I, I'm gonna go along with, uh, what Councilmember Clark said, and what's been said, that two, um, would be the limit. And I, I think we're accomplishing a lot, because if we look at all of the issues that we've had and the complaints, it's usually more than two where the issue is, is coming up. And so I will, I would compromise, I, I would go with that compromise and go with two. And again, we would include in that, however, if we can, the, the work trailer as part of that, because I don't wanna see two RVs and then a work trailer on top of that.
And, and that's my recommendation, is make a combination of RVs, two trailers, one RV, one trailer. But whatever the combination is, it's just two. That's it.
Do we include in that?
I think you're, I think you're accounting for the commercial side of it, too.
Yeah, well, and do we count for the commercial? That, in other words, there are a lot of people that bring their, their big, uh, commercial vehicles home. When I say big, you know, they, they're obviously not just a pickup.
Well, we have codes for that already, correct?
Is, is that included in this too, or not?
It's, it's not an RV, but we have codes for that, let, uh, I believe the state has laws that allows people to bring those home and park them, if I'm not mistaken.
Mayor, uh, we'll be talking about size limitations on commercial vehicles in the next couple of slides, but yes, uh, it is allowable at this time.
So, so on this portion, uh, removing the shall-not-exceed stuff, and then making a combination of two vehicles, whether they're RVs or trailers, including, uh, home use. Everybody's good with that?
Wait for it to come back to a voting meeting.
Well, well, we need a consensus for them. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple other items to talk about. It's not going to impact the consensus we just received. Uh, I did mention that we need, for public safety reasons, an access on either, uh, side of the house that has access to the rear yard, so it would be a gated side of the house, a minimum of three feet clearance, so that if public safety needs to get access to the rear of a house, they have an ability to do so. Uh, temporary loading and unloading, or for basic repair of these types of vehicles, would be allowed on the street for a time period not to exceed seventy-two hours. Uh, and then, as I stated, that they, they can't, when they're parked and/or stored on a residential property, they can't overhang a street sidewalk or alleyway. They cannot be lived in. Um, and they can't be used to store items in public view that would not otherwise be allowed to be stored in public view. So you couldn't park an open, small U, utility trailer, and then store all your Christmas decorations in it, in your front yard. We wouldn't allow that.
So I want a clarification. Shall not be lived in. A neighbor comes down from South Dakota, and they're gonna stay two days with you, they cannot live in, in, in their unit for a couple days?
Mayor members of the council, um, I'm gonna defer that to Mr. Bowling. That's getting a little specific again for me.
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, uh, we do get complaints about people living in RVs. It is something that, uh, neighbors do care a lot about. The reality of it is, if somebody comes down and they're living there, uh, we would only respond if we had a complaint. Then that would bring us to the property. We would educate them on, uh, the code, what it is, and, and that they wouldn't be allowed to live in there. The amount of timeframe, you know, we would give them a notice, uh, to cease.
So, uh, can, can we take that one step further? People, uh, lost their home, they're sleeping in their car. We can't control it, can we?
Mayor members of the council, that's correct.
And I think we're splitting hairs there. Uh, if, if that's their home, whether they're working or not, I, I mean, it, it just seems like that's problematic.
Mayor. Yeah, it may seem problematic, but if we don't have that rule on our books, then it becomes even more problematic, because then it'll be acceptable. And just because something is not allowable, doesn't mean it's not going to be, not going to happen, nor that it will, uh, not that we're going to look the other way, but it's going to happen, and nobody's gonna care, and nobody's gonna complain about it. Uh, that, there, there's things on the codebook today, lots of things, that people do. But because the neighbors don't care, no one, no one is concerned about it, then it, it's, it's basically not, not seen by the city. And even though we do have proactive enforcement on, in many cases, And even though we do have proactive enforcement on, in many cases, out there, I don't think that this, by saying allowing it, is going to be helpful for the city because then it could proliferate if we say, yeah, it's okay to live in your car in Glendale. We don't want, we don't want to see that. We don't want to see that it's okay to live in RVs because it's really more of a, my understanding, it's even, is it more of a state statute or is it strictly an ordinance in the city where it's not allowed to live in RVs that are parked on your property? That's a question.
Mayor, members of the council, right now, our city code does say that you cannot live in an RV in a residential district. That exists right now. So this isn't a change to the code. This is just clarification.
And I was just trying to point out the fact that I know that the courts have ruled that if you're homeless, we can't stop them from living in a park or things like that. It's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. It's not against the law to be homeless. It's unfortunate, it's not against the law.
Mayor?
Good.
I think we could find a hundred exceptions to every topic that we are talking about today. We are not legislating to the exception. We are legislating to a general problem that will solve ninety percent of the issues and the complaints that we all receive regarding RV parking. I would hate for us to spend our time looking for every single exception and say, well, because of that, we better not do it. Yeah, there will be times when people will come from North Dakota to come visit a person and end up living in the RV for a week or two. I've had it on my street. I don't care, quite frankly. And I wouldn't complain, and I doubt that any neighbor would complain. And I think in most situations, the general public would not complain if it's for a short duration. It's when it becomes problematical is when it occurs over months. And that's what we're legislating for, is the overall problem when it becomes acerbic to the general population. So, I think that what is provided is appropriate and should be considered for approval. Thank you, Mayor.
And I understand what you're saying, but I know my days in the legislature, we spent more time the year after trying to fix what we did because of all the unintended consequences, and that's the danger in what we do each time we take a vote. And again, what you just said, I totally agree. I don't think most people would argue, but I think there should be something up there that says you can stay three days or something like that if you're visiting from out of state or not a resident, but you're there to visit. Why do we want to send them to a different city? We don't have any RV parks in the city, so we'd have to send them out of our city to go somewhere else. It doesn't make sense to me. And we don't, we're not allowing an exception.
Again, we're not legislating for exceptions. We're legislating to solve a problem that has become significant enough through citizen complaint that it was brought to the attention of Code Review Committee, and this was their recommendation, and I stand by their recommendation.
I understand.
Mayor?
Good.
To that part of the conversation, that point, it seems to me that most of our neighbors are reasonable. This is going to, if somebody living in an RV on somebody's property is going to be a complaint-driven awareness to code, the complaint's probably not going to occur on day one. It's going to be as you roll into the second or third week and it's, the neighbors are going to have an issue with it. They don't want it to become a permanent situation, or they're tired of the generator running, or whatever the, you know, whatever the problems are that it's creating in the neighborhood. That's when they're going to bring it to code's attention. So if we say you can do it for two weeks, then if it's not brought to code's attention for two weeks, now they're going to get four weeks because you can't really back and force unless, even if they're willing to admit they've been there, it's probably hard for code to say, well, then you have to leave today. Oh, no, I didn't mean, I've been here the whole time. So, if we just say it's not allowed, then by the time it becomes an issue, code will be able to step in and quickly take care of it. And the rest of the time, if it's not an issue, it's not an issue.
I think, I agree that we need to act. I think, I understand that there's, as Councilwoman Clark said, there's always, you're always going to find some exception to the rule, but that doesn't mean there shouldn't be a rule, at least in my mind. And I was just looking, our friends at Desert Diamond Casino offer RV parking. I'm sure they'd be happy to host people visiting Glendale. Walmart also allows people to park in their, just checked to make sure that they still do, they still do, allow people to park their RV in their parking lot and stay there. So, and if there's an HOA, it's not allowed based on the CCNRs and the HOA rules, but there are places where people could, you know, move, keep their RV, you could pick them up and bring them to your house and bring them back there at night. But there are places, and it's, I'm sure it's a minute number of people that that situation's going to come into play in the first place, and there are options for people who end up in that situation, though. As Councilmember Turner said, if you give somebody two weeks, they could have already been there two weeks by the time you show up, and now they've got two more weeks. So, I just, my philosophy is, just because there's an exception to the rule doesn't mean we shouldn't have a rule. I do think we should have a rule. We're talking about people's property values and their quiet enjoyment of their own property. That really is what this, at least for me, what it comes down to. And I just, I think that, you know, there's ways for people to still be able to have guests with an RV, come and visit them in Glendale. So, I think we should move forward.
You're looking for a consensus?
Mayor, I don't need consensus on this item. It's a part of the code today, so there's no revision here. The next item for discussion are inoperable vehicles, and to kind of make the point that was just made, these are not code changes. These exist in the code today. What is recommended as a change is listed on the second slide, but to cover this quickly, there's limit one per residence. It needs to be parked in a garage, a carport, or an approved surface in a side yard, and if it's in a carport or side yard, it needs to be covered with a car cover. That is in the code today. The definition of...
I need to, I need to just ask a quick question. So, if it's on a side yard, Councilmember Oldama sort of went there, if it's on grass, is that okay on a side yard, not in the back, but on the side?
Mayor, if it is a screened side yard, then we are not regulating the approved surface. If it is in an unscreened side yard, then we would say that it needs to be on an approved dustproof surface, and grass would not be considered an approved dustproof surface.
What you keep referring to as side, I'm thinking front or back. So if it's, if it's in the back of that fence, then dustproof is not necessary. If it's in the front, then it'd have to be dustproof and covered.
Correct. Mayor, correct.
Mayor?
Good.
Thank you. Mr. St. John, Mr. Bowling, so how is this enforced? So specifically, if you either observe or have a complaint about an inoperable vehicle, and let's say, for instance, you go out and there's actually a vehicle in the driveway or approved surface, and it's up on blocks and doesn't have its wheels on, or it, you know, it's just really visibly, but let's take him in a drastic example like that. They can cure that problem apparently by purchasing a car cover and covering the vehicle, and if that's the case, how much time do they get to cure the problem, either remove the vehicle or bring it into compliance?
Mayor, members of the council, there's another part of the code that says you're allowed to repair your vehicle for up to fifteen days on your own property, so we have to keep that in consideration. But if there was a vehicle on blocks, the inspector would serve a notice which would give them, send it seven to ten days to correct it. That's the initial notice of violation. Reinspection would occur, and if the violation still occurred, we would give them a final notice for another seven to ten days. Reinspection after that, if the violation still occurred, we would issue a civil citation. If a vehicle's on blocks on a driveway, that's clearly an inoperable vehicle that we would enforce. Throwing a car cover over that wouldn't correct that because we would still be able to see that there's a vehicle on blocks, which makes it inoperable.
Seven to ten days, and then if it's not corrected, another seven to ten days, and then that's a criminal citation, I think, no.
Civil citation.
Civil citation, and if they cure it, by the time their court date comes, they'll either get away with it or get off, you know, with a slap. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, what is changing as a recommendation from the Code Review Committee is the definition of an inoperable vehicle. So the first three are part of the definition as it stands today. Wrecked or partially dismantled, can't move under its own power, has flat tires, and then there's other cobweb debris collection of those types of things under the vehicle that can lend to the belief that the vehicle is inoperable. The Code Review Committee is recommending that we add unregistered and unlicensed to the definition, and I've provided a picture of a vehicle that is unregistered. So this is an unregistered vehicle. For the sake of argument, we'll say that it's legally parked on a, an approved dustproof surface. This would now be considered inoperable because it's unlicensed, unregistered. That is the primary change to this code.
Thank you, Mayor. I've had, believe it or not, some of the areas in my district that don't have HOAs have, some of these people have dealt with this. And if this was, if the picture that you showed, if it was backed in, there'd be no way to verify whether it was unlicensed or, so, and I know that's how people have gotten around this issue, so is there, is there something? I thought you always couldn't park unregistered, unlicensed vehicles on your property. Maybe, maybe I just thought that, but we're, your inspectors are, are they not allowed to go up onto the property to look to see if the vehicle is registered, or are they?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, the code's written to say that the violation must be viewed from beyond the boundary of the lot, so they would not be able to go onto the property to gain access to the rear of a backed-in vehicle to determine whether it's registered and licensed.
Mayor, would that preclude the code inspector from knocking on the door and asking to see if the vehicle was registered or licensed?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, inspectors can always knock on the door and have a conversation with homeowners about complaints and alleged violations, and we encourage that because even if we can't prove a violation is occurring, if somebody knows that a complaint has been made, it's likely hopeful that they will correct the violation just for the sake of being a good neighbor. So we do encourage those conversations, but we would not be able to take enforcement action through the court system unless we could prove the case as the code is written, and that would be beyond the boundary of the lot.
Okay, Mayor, so basically, if this vehicle was backed in, there, you'd be, you would not be able to enforce it, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchov, that's correct.
Okay. Hmm? Yeah, it's just, people know that, and then they just back them in.
Mayor?
Page next.
Again, part of the reason for this recommendation is not to necessarily eliminate the picture that we're seeing. That's not the problem. The problem is when they got seven of those. And many times, you know, we can see that they're partially dismantled and we can cite, but if we can see that they're not registered and they got seven of them, likely we'll be able to maybe see one or two and can take care of the problem. So it's not, it's not the problem, that vehicle, in my opinion, isn't a problem. It's not a problem at all. To have that vehicle parked in a non-HOA street that's not registered, that looks like an operable vehicle, I don't see it as a problem. But we've got to address it in a way that we can address those that are problems. And so that's why we're recommending this, this change of registered, unregistered, unlicensed. And I just had a question for Mr. St. John. If a vehicle is not currently with a current tag, is it considered unregistered or unlicensed or both?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, I've struggled with that myself. So is current registration, does that mean that it's registered, or if it had previous registration and it's on file with Motor Vehicle Division, is that considered registered? And I don't know how the courts would view that. Maybe Mr. Bailey can speak to that.
Again, all I would recommend here is that we change it from unregistered and, meaning it, make it an or. So if it's unregistered, meaning it, or if it's unlicensed, meaning it's not, doesn't have a current tag. If we change it to an or, I think we'd resolve that problem.
I'd like to, just have something to think about here. That same vehicle, if they have a cover over it, it's legal. What I'm saying is, that same vehicle, just the way that picture is, if they put a cover over it, it's legal. So if somebody buys a vehicle that's not registered from another state, brought in by auto transport, they're giving it to their kid that turns sixteen in three months, that way you're going to cite them, but if they cover it up, they're not going to cite them. Yeah, I don't like it. Good.
Thank you, Mayor. This does get to be a little bit stickier because under the current situation, the only thing wrong with that vehicle is it doesn't have the right postage-size stamp in the corner of its license plate. And that, you know, that to me is a bit onerous. The, onerous. The, and it is, correct me if I'm wrong, it is true that that would not be legal were it parked on the street. If it's parked on the street, it must be registered. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, that is correct.
Right. So, I think the fact that it's not currently registered or, quote, the registration's expired, same thing to me, could be a contributing factor, but that in and of itself, I don't think, it just, I'm not sure that it needs to be the determining factor, sole determining factor. But at the same time, too, if that sits there for six months or a year, then it's a stored vehicle, and that's, and that's an issue. You know, you can't, I don't think it's appropriate that we allow people to store, you know, indefinitely, a number of, any number of vehicles in there in public view because people aren't, didn't sign up to live in a storage yard, they lived in a neighborhood.
I personally don't like adding the not registered to that, personally. I think it's problematic.
Mayor? Mr. St. John, it's not an addition, it's the current situation, right?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, this would be a change to the definition of an inoperable vehicle.
Okay. Add not registered.
So currently, the way our language that we're, I've drafted an amended chapter twenty-four that I'll bring to workshop in a couple of weeks on June eighth, and in that amended language, we suggest that there be an or attached to this section. So it says, the vehicle, actually, it's an and, so we could say unregistered or unlicensed and meets some of the other criteria of the definition. So it would need to be in some way otherwise visibly unable to be operated on a roadway, so missing a windshield, missing headlights, missing taillights, missing the front end, or some, in some other way, partially or wholly dismantled, as well as not being currently registered.
Then we're making it, Mayor, if I may, making it contingent upon the registration, it sounds like. So even if it looked, if it was inoperable because it didn't have a, didn't have window glass and all of that, if it was registered, that would not, that would get them out of it. I don't think that's what we're looking for. Maybe what we should look at is a vehicle whose registration has expired more than six months becomes an, for the sake of this code, becomes an inoperable vehicle. And that would mean that they could have this vehicle delivered from out of state on a flatbed carrier and put in their driveway for their child's pending graduation as early as March and still be fine to be, then give it to them and get it registered by June.
Phelps next, and then you. Phelps next, and then you.
I hesitate to muddy the waters up, but I just want to remind the council that, one, I think our code enforcement team, every day, they have to use discretion in terms of how they apply rules and regulations and guidance that the council's established. On having owned a building, previously it was built in 1926, I can assure you that any day of the week, a fire inspector could come in and could issue a citation. I would venture to say today, that if a fire inspector came into this building, we likely could find a code infraction. Police departments have a whole range of things they can do. Probably most of us in this room have done a California stop at a stop sign, and you can be cited for it. I rarely find that ever being the case, that a police officer is going to cite a citizen even though they have it in the code. It is, but it is a tool that can be used. And so I think in terms of trying to find the perfect set of scenarios, what I would just remind you is that I think what we have, I think, is a very good professional team, and, and we, we always use discretion in terms of how they're applied. But if you try to almost legislate out every example, I think it's going to be a challenge. And so just again, I don't know whether this is a, is helpful to the conversation or not. But again, you know, with this particular example here, this is not necessarily the problem we're trying to fix. But I don't know how you could write the code that would accept this and something else. But I, I can't imagine Mr. Bowling and his team is, is running down the street every day looking for this opportunity to find a car that doesn't have current tabs on it. So just, again, you know, we always take direction. I think these are really important workshops for our code enforcement team because we get a sense of what direction the council wants to go as a whole for whether we're hyper vigilant on what we enforce, whether we show discretion, whether we relax on it. But it generally can fall anywhere in between there, and we, we demonstrate that every day of the week with, with our fire department, with our police department, with our code enforcement. You know, discretion is always being used.
Thank you, Mayor. This photo here doesn't do justice. That's a nice looking vehicle. It's, it's like an operable vehicle, and it just doesn't have its registered tab.
Correct.
So I'll give you an example. One of my vehicles needed its registration tab in June. I got it in May. I never received the tab to put it on the license plate. So it appeared that I didn't have registration. You might have come by and given me a ticket or a warning for it, but I didn't, I didn't receive it over four months until I called them again. I didn't get it. So we had to go in and pay extra to get the tab. This is, this doesn't illustrate the problem in, in at least my district. I'm talking about vehicles that have been sitting there for a year with no registration. Now, what Councilmember Turner said is, is reality. That, that can happen. So I'd hate to give somebody a ticket or a warning if they lapsed for a couple of weeks. So you don't have anything that states after 60 days, after 90 days.
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, no, that is not currently in the code.
Okay. And, and I would be open to that because things happen. Let me give you another example. Every vehicle I own and my, my recreational trailer I pull, everything is, unfortunately for us, is due in the same two, in, in May and June. So we gotta pay everything. So for some families, they can't afford to do that, so it may take them a couple of weeks. I'm okay with that. I'm not okay with after 90 days. Like, you gotta go get your registration, man. You can't be driving that thing. If it's sitting in the parking lot for 30 days, okay, get some money and go get it. So can we add something like that, timeline?
Mayor Councilmember Aldama, if it's the, it's a council consensus to do so, yes, sir.
Okay. So I'd like, I'd like to ask the council to consider that, maybe 30 days. I'll just throw that out on the table. But this vehicle doesn't demonstrate the problem we have. We have vehicles out there that are abandoned with no registration over a year. But I'd like to, if we're going to do the registration, that we do at least, I would say 30 days. I'll be good at that. Thank you, Mayor.
I could agree with doing some sort of timeline on it. But again, I think I'm going to go back to what our city manager said. You know, these are simply tools that our code enforcement will use. They're not going to go out there, in my opinion, they're not going to go out there and go down, drive the streets and look for that vehicle that's not registered, that's 30 days overdue. They're, they're not going to do that. But, but by having something in their toolbox like this, when they come across one where there's five of those vehicles, and some of them are backed in and some may be exposed with their license, unregistered, that's where they'll have a little bit of enforcement capability, and that's the purpose of doing this. So, but at the same time, I don't see this vehicle as being a problem, and I think we could probably put, we wanted to put some, some time delay in that, that, you know, unregister for 90 days, I wouldn't have a problem doing that.
Do you need?
Mayor, we are looking for consensus on whether or not to add unregistered and, or exchanging or for and, unlicensed as a part of the definition for inoperable vehicle. I need, I'm looking for consensus on that item.
I don't support that. Do you have a consensus?
Thank you.
Add the 90-day or 60-day, or what do we, do we want to do that as?
If, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna give it. I like your 90 days better. 90 days?
Mayor, if I can ask for clarification on that. How would we handle an unlicensed vehicle?
Are you going to handle it?
If there's no license plate?
If it's visible from the rear, from the street, I guess your code enforcement's going to go up and say this is a requirement. You've got 90 days to fix it.
Thank you.
Registered. I guess I'd.
Agree.
Or park it in your backyard and cover it up.
I, I would say you would, you would cite them, and then if they can prove it's less than 90 days old, then, then it goes away.
Okay, so let's, before we go there, do you typically warn before you cite?
Mayor members of council, yes, sir.
Then I would suggest doing what you've been doing in the past. Give a warning and then cite.
Well, but normally, you would give somebody a warning so that they have a period of time to remedy it. This, this one, we're saying you go ahead and cite them, and then they have 90 days to remedy it before there's actually any action taken against them. Otherwise, it would be longer than 90 days, wouldn't it? Right? I mean, if you give them a time to remedy, and then you give them, it would be longer than 90 days. So why? Well, then you have to change it from 90 days then, if you're going to.
If I may, Mayor, I, I think that we're talking about the 90 days is if the code were to come upon a vehicle, and it is, has been, it's not more than 90 days old, they don't even enforce that. If they, if there's a tag on there. It's only, the exception would be if there's no tag, we don't know if it's 90 days, so we have no option but to talk to them and tell them they need to get a tag on it, or prove that the tag is, is 90 days or less.
Mayor, could I ask then, Mr. St. John, is it, is it just the tag on the vehicle, or is the, is the violation noted with the address? Because that's where the vehicle is, so you would be able to tell when it was, because the tags can be removed, which I know, I know people do. They just take the tag off, and then.
But a registered vehicle doesn't have to be registered at that home.
And you don't have to go up onto the property to write, you could, you can write this, the code thing, send it in the mail, and then they have 90 days. And nobody has to, that, that's the contact with the homeowner is it gets mailed to them, wasn't that how, because you can't go onto the property anyway and tag the vehicle, can you? It's on their own personal property.
Mayor Councilmember Tomalchov, that's correct. As, as Mr. Bowling described, typically on inoperable vehicles, we give a seven to 10-day first notice. If the violation continues after the 10 days, I'll say, then they get a seven to 10-day second notice violation, and then we issue civil citation. That's typically how we handle inoperable vehicles. I'll have to discuss with Mr. Bowling how we adjust for the 90-day provision on this particular item.
Mayor.
And, and you're citing the, the person at the residence, the supposed owner?
They might be trying to.
Or leasing, not the vehicle itself.
Mayor members of council, we cite the person responsible for the vehicle that's parked on the property.
Correct.
That may be the homeowner, or it may be someone other than the actual homeowner.
Correct.
Mayor.
The, the comment was made about citing the vehicle. It's not a parking ticket. It's going to have a person understand that they have to fix the problem.
Thank you, Mayor. My understanding on the 90 days and time limits we discussed was that if the registration has expired for 90 days or longer, then it becomes by definition an inoperable vehicle, and you would deal with it as an inoperable vehicle. It doesn't mean they get an additional 90 days to get it registered. It's the same.
Mayor Councilmember Turner, I understood that as well, but what about unlicensed vehicles that don't have a tab at all, was the question I asked.
Okay. So the, the license plate has been removed?
Mayor Councilmember Turner, correct.
Yeah, I would, I would consider that an immediate violation unless they can, you know, correct it, and they go, oh yeah, we took it off so it didn't get stolen. Well, we appreciate that. Put it on with, you know, some Loctite, but it needs to be displayed.
Mayor.
I, I don't like 90 days. I think that's far too long because they have seven to 10 days on the first site, another seven to 10 days on the second site, and then it goes to civil. So that's 20 days right there. I, I would say, and, and how many times has code given people 30 days to fix the problem? So, I, you know, the most I would give them is 50 days, period. That includes the two-site periods and additional 30 days. If they can't fix it in 50 days, it's not going to get fixed. I think 90 days just creates more consternation for the people who are looking at the problem and saying, oh, look, the city didn't do anything about this again. So, um, and, and then I want to bring up another thing. We were talking about cars being parked backwards so you can't even see the license plate. This is a question for code. If you see a vehicle with obvious cobwebs and spiders and six inches of dust, are you allowed to take that into consideration when considering whether a vehicle is inoperable or not?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, cobwebs underneath a vehicle don't necessarily make it inoperable. As our current definition is, inoperable means it's not able to operate. Cobwebs underneath it, you can still get in, start it up, and drive it off. It just means that it hasn't been driven for months.
Point taken.
But that doesn't itself make it inoperable.
Yeah, point taken. Thank you.
Mayor. Yes, I just want to be clear. I, that Councilmember Turner said it just as I understood it, is if the vehicle's tags are due on May 30th, then they have until August to get it done. That's three months. That's it. Not upon your arrival, they have 90 days. It's, we're citing you because it's, I mean, don't, so for example, if you're a neighbor, don't call on that until August because they have 90 days from the day of the registration laps. That's how I understand it. 90 days is kind of long, but I, I can live with that. I understand. That's how I understand it to be. If that's what you're saying, then that's what I'd like to see consensus on.
Yeah, what you need.
Thank you. We'll move on to vehicle parking and storage. This is really about gross vehicle weight ratings. Code Review Committee and the consultants recommend two provisions. One, 10,000 pounds or 14,000 pounds for a heavy-duty pickup truck. It's got, unless it's stored in an enclosed garage, and then you can exceed that limit. And then there's an exemption for certain SR and RR-zoned properties, for personal machinery, tractors, farm equipment, things of that nature. Storing commercial vehicles is prohibited. You can drive, you can use, you can park a commercial vehicle, one, on your property. You can't store a commercial vehicle on your property. Stored personal vehicle must be owned or leased by the homeowner or renter, which kind of excludes the commercial in and of itself. And it must be stored in an approved parking area on an approved dustproof surface. So the question for the council today is really around the gross vehicle weight rating. We've heard from constituents that there are heavy-duty pickup trucks, for example, that can go all the way up to 19,500 pounds, a gross vehicle weight rating, that are personal-use vehicles. So we're looking for consensus from the council on the GVWR rating that you'd like to see in the code, understanding that there's a different provision for commercial vehicles. These would be vehicles for personal use. And then there is a definition for commercial vehicles in the code where the vehicle is, is identified or branded with a company name or moniker. And there can be other parts of the definition that, that make something a commercial vehicle as opposed to a, a primary use vehicle, personal use vehicle. And with that, I'll, I'll open the floor for questions from council or conversation.
I guess I'll start it because I'm probably the only one here that owns a pickup truck that has a 10,000 GVW. But I know that Ford makes a Super Duty, which to the average person, looks just like a pickup truck, just heavier duty. And they're typically made for pulling heavier trailers, which very likely could be fifth-wheeler, gooseneck-type trailers for recreation. So I don't have a problem if it's privately used and driven. I do know people that drive them as regular daily drivers. I couldn't afford to do that. I mean, we're talking vehicles in excess of $100,000, but I guess if you got it, fly it, right? I don't have a problem with that if it's non-commercial, if it's not commercial use.
I, I would agree with that. I, I think we should change the heavy-duty pickup to 19.5, as I've come across information that verifies that indeed there are pickups out there for it. Chevy GMC, I believe, make those vehicles that are for residential, for regular use. But as Rick St. John and I spoke about this briefly, we do need to make sure that, that we're not saying that all other vehicles are included in that, only that, that heavy-duty pickup that is used for personal use. Had just a question regarding the, I guess, the commercial vehicle, because we're talking about parking and storage. So we're saying that no commercial vehicle, I want to just make sure I understand this, and then we clarify for the public, that any vehicle greater than 10,000 pounds cannot be stored at the residential's front yard, but with the exception of the pickup that's up to 19.5, if we agree with this change. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, if I'm tracking correctly, you're speaking about commercial vehicles. Commercial vehicles cannot be stored on a property unless they are in an enclosed garage, regardless of GVWR.
Okay. What about in backyards? Are we going to, how do we regulate that, or is that not included in backyards? Is this just for front yards?
Mayor members of council, Councilmember Malnar, if it is visible from beyond the boundary of the lot, then we can enforce in a screened side or rear yard.
So if it were, again, if I may, Mayor, if it's in a backyard, it's got a very tall fence, and you can't see it from the street, then it's okay. Or if it's hidden somehow in the backyard where you can't see it, then we would not enforce it. But otherwise, a commercial vehicle in a backyard, we would enforce if we can see it from the street.
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, that's correct. If we can see it beyond the boundary of the lot, this vehicle that I have on the picture, for example, is a, clearly a commercial vehicle. It's branded, and it's a box truck used for commercial purpose. If that was parked in a screened side or rear yard, and we could see it parked there, then we would enforce.
Okay, if I may, Mayor. Then where does the, where do you distinguish between that commercial vehicle and, and a, say, a backhoe? Is that considered a commercial vehicle, or is that considered, considered under the machinery only?
Echo is a tractor.
Or a tractor.
Mayor, Councilmember Malnar, I'll defer to Mr. Bowling on that. I believe there's an exemption in rural residential and SR-zoned properties for personally-owned machinery of that type.
Mayor members of council, that's correct. Rural residential and SR, they allow tractors and machinery that is, is. they allow tractors and machinery that is, is normal for operations on that property. Residential districts do not allow construction equipment.
So, a, a backhoe, if I may, Mayor, a backhoe in, in a R16 neighborhood backyard would not be appropriate?
Mayor members of the council, that's correct. It, as long as we can see it and identify exactly what it is.
If I may continue, I just wanted to get clarification again, because we, we've talked about, uh, parking a work vehicle. Say, say a person, for their business, has a large tractor or something that they have on a trailer, and they bring it home at night and they park it in, on their yard. Again, on the street, I guess it'd be illegal because we said that. But if they park that on their yard, is that going to be considered a, a violation, or because it's work-related, it's not?
Mayor members of the council, if somebody, uh, pulled in with a truck and they had a trailer with a, a large backhoe on it, on their property, that would be illegal. That would violate city code.
Okay, thank you.
I, I don't know the exact address, but on Thunderburg Road, approximately sixty-fifth, sixty-sixth Avenue, North Side Road, there's a large piece of property. Uh, I've been a resident of Glendale for a long time. It has a lot of equipment, a lot of equipment. I don't know if it's his backyard, his front yard. I don't know what you would term that as. So, that particular situation, is he going to get several citations?
Mayor members of the council, I, I believe, I know what property you're talking about. I believe that is, uh, RR-zoned. I believe it's, it's designed for farm. So, they can, they're, they are allowed to have farm equipment, uh, tractors and large equipment.
He's, he's got a lot of stuff out there. But there's several locations in Glendale that has similar situation. I don't think any has as much as it, gentlemen. Kind of envious. I mean, I, I think it's pretty cool.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to make sure, what's the difference between parking and storing? How long does something have to be parked before it's considered being stored?
To the council, that's, that's a tough question. The ordinance hasn't really defined storing, how long something is stored. In addition to that, um, it's very difficult for code staff to identify exactly how long something is parked in the same place. We are not allowed to go up on the property and mark the tires to see if it moves or not. It's common for people to park their vehicle in the same place every night when they come home from work. So it would be challenging for us to, to define something being stored.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, if I can add to that, there is a definition for vehicle storage in the code, uh, and it does not, uh, it's not determined based on how much time the vehicle spends in a particular spot. It kind of goes back to some of the definition, uh, that we might find under inoperable vehicle. When it talks about cobwebs, dirt, debris, things collecting and gathering under the vehicle that, that give, uh, a, a person who's walking by the idea that the vehicle is not being used, that it is being stored. And that's how we have typically enforced stored vehicles in the past.
Mayor, if I could continue. So, just for example, um, the picture you have up there, say the, the people went on vacation, and so they brought their, they brought their, this work truck home and left it there, and they were gone for two weeks. Um... Yeah, I'm, yeah, but I mean, is it considered store? Okay, what about a, uh, the other thing that I'm confused about, and this happened already in, uh, we've dealt with it, Rick, is vans. Vans that are branded, wrapped, whatever, and some, you can only have one of those?
Mayor Councilmember Tomachoff, that is correct. One per property.
Um, so if we were going to do the two for the, um, I, I want to go back to the beginning of the conversation where we were saying we could have, you could have one RV and one trailer or something like, because I, I do know somebody who had, they had, that's a husband and wife. They have two businesses, they have two vans, and I don't want to make life, I understand, but I want, also don't want to make life difficult for people who, that's their work vehicle. They drive that, I think one of them does windshields, and I forget what the other one does, but they have two branded, I think they are. Weren't they, weren't they?
Mayor, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, they were both under ten thousand gross vehicle weight rating.
Oh, they were, okay. So, as long as they're, so is a cargo van over ten thousand gross vehicle weight?
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, usually not. There, there may be a couple on the market that are heavier duty that would exceed ten thousand, but I wouldn't think anything would exceed twelve thousand.
Okay. I just think that the, the word storing a commercial vehicle without any kind of like length of time or something just might, at least to me, it would, could possibly end up being subject to interpretation, which I guess code is anyway. But I, I'm just wondering if you're going to end up in a debate with people about, well, it's parked, it's not stored. So, how long does it have to be parked there before you consider that it's being stored? So, it's a little confusing, ambiguous to me.
Councilmember Melnar?
And I, I think it's irrelevant, because if it's there, it's a violation. If, if, I mean, we're talking about over ten thousand, over nineteen-five, uh, it's a violation. Whether it's there one minute or ten years, it's still a violation. So, I don't know that timing has anything to do with it. You, the, the, the word "storage" could be removed there, and it, and it doesn't matter.
Vice Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, you are allowed to park a commercial vehicle under a specific, and, and I'll need consensus from the council on what the, the gross vehicle weight rating you would like us to include in the code. Uh, but if it's under that gross vehicle weight rating, they would be allowed to park a commercial vehicle on a residentially-zoned property. Right now, the code limits one commercial vehicle per residentially-zoned property. Um, but you would be allowed to park one. Under no circumstances can you store a commercial vehicle on a residentially-zoned property. The way we enforce vehicle storage is the blight condition that surrounds the parked vehicle. And I'm saying parked vehicle, but what I mean is stored vehicle. So if there, if it's, if it's evident that the vehicle is not being used, and it's evident by the dirt and debris and other things to collect under vehicles over time, then code would go out and enforce as a stored commercial vehicle.
Mayor? So I just want to make sure I understand. You can have, as long as it's under ten thousand gross vehicle weight, you could have more than one commercially-branded type vehicle parked in, in your residential driveway?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, no. You can have one commercial vehicle parked on a residentially-zoned property. You cannot store any commercial vehicles on a residentially-zoned property.
Okay, so, Mayor, um, the issue, the situation that we, we were talking about, the two van, they could only have one van at their home then, even though they're, neither one of them weigh o- over that vehicle weight, they still wouldn't be able to drive their work vehicle back and forth to the residence?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, that is correct. They were in violation because they had two commercial vehicles parked on their residential property, and the limit is one.
Mayor?
Okay.
To that point, if the, if a commercial vehicle is in a closed garage or in a garage, would it be a violation? So if they have two and one's in the garage, is that an issue?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, no.
Build them a garage.
I, Mayor, I, I mean, I just see that this could be a problem with people who have, you know, businesses where there's two, uh, and then, is, is it, if it's wrapped or branded, or, I mean, how, how do you determine, um, you know, if you're a realtor and you got those magnet things, although they don't stick to cars anymore because there's too much plastic, but, I mean, how do you determine, what is, what is really a commercial vehicle? If you have, if you wrap it, is it considered any kind of vehicle? Let's see, we wrapped, we wrapped cars. Are those, you know, if somebody brought that home, is that considered, it's wrapped, it's branded, is it commercial?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, yeah, anything that has advertising on it is for a commercial purpose.
I think that could be problematic for, for, I'm sorry, Mayor. That could be problematic for people with two, with two businesses, or a husband and wife that are both working in the same business. I think that could be problematic for them. And I don't want to make it difficult for people who are just out trying to make a living. So, um, it could be a wrapped car, and even a wrapped car and a van or something like that, you're still, um, and I actually know people who do that, too, is she goes out and does the bidding, and then he's the contractor that, you know, engages with the work, but they both have branded vehicles that they bring home. So, um, I just don't want to, you know, have unintended consequences where now we've made it difficult for these people to even continue their business. So, would, would you be open to two then, as long as they're licensed, or, and they're under, under the ten thousand weight? I don't know, I don't know, why not?
Yeah, I personally would support that myself.
That you would allow two?
I would.
Yeah, because I don't want to put people that are doing that, uh, you know, what are the, what are they going to do?
I think it's the unintended consequences that we're all facing by not thinking.
Mayor?
Oh, we are thinking, actually.
Were you finished?
I'm finished, yeah.
Okay. I agree with Councilmember Turner. They could stick one in their garage, park their car, and the other commercial vehicle in their driveway, and be perfectly legal. There are always solutions out there. Uh, I think sometimes we just make this more complicated than it needs to be. And, and, and here's my problem. Now we're going to allow two commercial vehicles. We're going to allow two RVs. Before you know it, we're facing the same problem that we've always had before. Uh, you got to draw the line somewhere. Uh, I support one commercial vehicle parked in a residential, uh, property. Thank you.
And I guess my response to that is, it's easy to say just park it in a garage, but if they've got their jet skis in a garage, and they have, uh, one vehicle in there, and they still have two vehicles that have magnets on the side for their business, uh, I, I just think that, again, I, I know that you try to think these things through, but the unintended consequences are, are going to bite us. I'm convinced of that.
Well, I have a suggestion, and I don't know if you could make this work with code, but if we said, it can't be, it can be one or the other, or the combination of one or the other, but not all, like, you can't have two RVs and two commercial vehicles, but if you have, you can have two, but you can have any combination of maximum of two vehicles. One RV and one work van, or two work vans, or two RVs, but you cannot have, you can only have a combination. You can only, the maximum is two vehicles. Um, I literally, I know people, I know people that this would, would harm their business, doing this. And I don't, I, I can't, I can, couldn't go along with it, that's why. So I don't know whether you'd be open to that, to a max of two, combination, um, and I don't, I don't even know if that's even feasible, that's something that you could work it out, that you can have two, and that you can pick whatever two you want, but you can only have two.
But could we look at, maybe look at this differently? That truck right there, two of those out in front of a house, I would have a problem with.
That's not what we're talking about.
Two cars that have Century Twenty-One on doors, to me, shouldn't, shouldn't be called a commercial vehicle, in my opinion. If it has a wrap on it that says "Support Veterans", I don't see that as a commercial vehicle, personally. But to me, two of those sitting out there obviously looks pretty bad.
Yeah. Well, and, and if I may, Mayor, that, that, I think we're addressing that issue because we're saying less than ten thousand pounds. And I think that, that would allow for a van, a, a, well, and again, I wouldn't, I would be willing to compromise to the two, uh, because I can see very well a family having several people living there that, uh, bring home a van or a work vehicle, allowing for two. And again, we're talking about parking on the front driveway. We're not talking about streets here at all. So, they could actually have now two RVs, two, um, commercial, or two vans, and then their other kids could have two more vans or three vans parked on the street. And if they, and that would be acceptable. Um, I don't know that that situation is the problems we're trying to correct. The problems we're trying to correct is when these vehicles are parked there for long periods of time, and they disrupt the overall appearance of the neighborhood, not with people coming and going, going to work and bringing vehicles home. So I would be willing to compromise with, with the two, um, less than ten thousand, or the nineteen-five on a pickup. Uh, I, I don't have a problem with that, and, because it's going to get rid of this in our neighborhoods. That isn't allowed, basically is what we're saying. And that's the problem we're trying to address, is that. The other things are just people living. Sometimes you have multiple families living in the same home because of circumstances, and we do need to accommodate for that. So, I would say, uh, allowing for two would be acceptable.
And, and I, I think everybody's aware of it, but as the prices of homes continue getting higher and higher, I think you're going to find more and more multi-generational folks living together, grandparents, parents, and kids, all in the same home, where the kids are a driving age. So, uh, this isn't going to get better, it's going to get worse. It's going to get worse. And the next thing we're going to be saying, well, you can only have three cars. Uh, that's not going to work.
And if I may, Mayor, again, we're talking vehicles that aren't obnoxious-looking, if I can say that. Uh, in a neighborhood, that doesn't belong. Uh, a cargo van with maybe a wrap on it, or maybe just with a phone number on it, I don't see a problem parking that on somebody's driveway.
But, but we need to, we need to address that so they don't call that commercial, is all I'm saying. We don't identify that where we don't have to worry about that.
Well, we just call it ten thousand pounds or less, and it's, it's covered.
Was, was your definition of "commercial"? Anything with advertising on the side?
Mayor, members of the council, the definition, uh, says that the vehicle is customarily used to carry passengers or property in the furtherance of a commercial enterprise and meets one of several criteria. That criteria is listed as three or more axles, uh, length in excess of twenty-two feet, uh, GBRW in excess of twenty thousand pounds, and having painted there on or affixed there to a sign identifying a business, industry, office, or institution, or principal product of, uh, or service of such. And that would be a change to the code. That fourth bullet would be a change to the code.
Could be a small car with advertising. If we got rid of that, I'd be fine.
Mayor, if I may, um, I want to make sure I understand what that addition is exactly, uh, Mr. St. John, that, that we're talking about here. What is the exact language that you're talking about would be the addition?
The exact language that would, I'm sorry, Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, the exact language that would be an addition is having painted there on or affixed there to a sign identifying a business, industry, office, or institution, or a principal product or service of such.
Again, if I may, Mayor, I mean, you, you mentioned twenty thousand pounds, but yet we're talking about ten thousand here. So I'm, I'm a little confused, because you, you identified what a commercial vehicle definition is, but we're not really talking about commercial vehicles so much here, as we're talking about vehicles that are less than ten thousand pounds.
Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, a vehicle in excess of twenty pound, twenty thousand pounds would automatically be a commercial vehicle. It is one of the criteria that would automatically make it a commercial vehicle. Uh, so a, an F-350, uh, or a heavy-duty pickup truck that had a gross vehicle weight rating of nineteen thousand five hundred would not meet the automatic definition of a commercial vehicle unless it met one of the other criteria. And one of those would be that it has, that it's wrapped for a commercial purpose, that it has a business logo wrapped around it, and that it's used for commercial purposes. So, if, if you, if you recall, in the definition, it says, "The vehicle is used for commercial purpose and meets one of the following criteria."
Mayor, if I may, I would, could, could we add to that definition, uh, ten thou, and is over ten thousand pounds? Because anything under ten thousand, I think, meets the mayor's concern. You have three cars with a label on it. You don't want to limit that. But if, but they're going to be under ten thousand pounds. It's only those that are larger that would be considered.
With that one thing that they're adding to the end of it, you're taking... With that one thing that they're adding to the end of it, you're taking potentially a small Ford Fiesta that says "Molly Made" on it, that's a commercial vehicle at this point.
Not if you use the 10,000-pound limit, then you don't include that.
Mayor, Councilmember Melnar, as we enforce the commercial vehicle parking on residentially-zoned properties today, the gross vehicle weight rating doesn't matter. If it's, if it is a commercial, if it is an air-conditioning, air-conditioning repair person driving a van that's under 10,000 GWR, but it is clearly a commercial vehicle used for commercial purposes, then we would only allow one per residentially-zoned property.
I clearly oppose that. I just think that, I literally can name several people that I know of that would affect their ability to earn a living by limiting them to have one vehicle with advertising on it. I think two is reasonable, and if you want to limit it to two, you know, that somebody can't have two, as Councilmember Clark said, two commercial vehicles and two RVs, I understand that, and I think that's what we're trying to solve, but I can't, I can't support something that I know is going to make it difficult for people to pursue their business.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomalchaf, if I may. The regulation around how many commercial vehicles you can park on a residentially-zoned property is not what we're asking council consensus on today, although, if council wants to expand that, we certainly can, and we would take that direction. What we're looking for today, what we're looking for consensus on today is the gross vehicle weight rating. So currently in the code, it says 10,000 pounds. In the Code Review Committee's work, they realized that there are several personally-owned vehicles that exceed 10,000 pounds. There's heavy-duty trucks that go all the way up to 19,500 pounds. So does the council want to adopt language in the code, new language in the code that changes 10,000 GWR to something higher, either 14,000 or 19,500, however the council would like that worded? And if we want to expand on other portions of the code as it exists today, so moving from one commercial vehicle allowed on a residentially-zoned property to two, we can certainly do that, but as is written in the code today, not recommended by the Code Review Committee, the current code says you can only have one per residentially-zoned property. So I just want to, I want to make it clear that the Code Review Committee is not recommending that we only have, allow one. That's as the code is written today.
I didn't hear any feedback negative on a vehicle up to 19.5, so is there consensus on that?
Mayor, for clarity, it's pickup trucks to 19.5.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, for ease of enforcement, we would like, we would suggest council adopt AGVWR as a standard. We can put language in the code that says, heavy-duty pickup trucks not to exceed 19,500 GWR. I always want to say GVRW, but having several different distinctions. So 10,000 pounds for commercial, 14,000 for medium-sized pickups, 19.5 for the larger pickups, becomes harder to enforce at that point.
And the danger of specifying pickup truck, if they put a flatbed on the back to make it easier to pull a fifth-wheel trailer, you may not call that a pickup truck, even though it's the same cab. The chassis might be a little different. If you call it a light truck under 19.5, I think that we can address that pretty easy.
Mayor, if I might, my understanding from the Code Committee was pickup truck, that was the visual we were provided, it was a pickup truck-style vehicle, so I just tried to make sure that, you know, that I'm fair to the Code Committee as to what they were looking at, it wasn't. And again, we're talking about in our regular residential neighborhoods, not the large lots or neighborhoods, just the residential, regular residential. The understanding was plenty of families have more than a half-ton pickup truck as their family daily driver, it's the, you know, they have the crew cabs, a half-ton crew cab probably is pushing the earlier limit, and then certainly if it's a three-quarter ton or a one-ton.
Mayor, I'm so confused at this point. I am not a techie person, and when we talk about 20,000 pounds or 10,000, I have no concept of what that implies. I had hoped that you could have included some photos of what these different animals represent, so that I would have a clearer idea, and the general public would, about what we're talking about. Obviously, that, whatever it is, I'm assuming is over 20,000 pounds, and it's ghastly. Is it over 20,000 pounds?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily. See, I don't know. So I can't even render an opinion at this point, because I'm so confused, I don't know what anything represents. Thank you.
And just, because I don't want everybody to be confused, that's referred to typically as a cab over cube van. That's typically what it's considered, and it can be anywhere from 10,000 pounds on up to 30,000 pounds. But when we're talking about pickup trucks, the front of the pickup, the part that you get in and drive, the cab itself, on a heavy-duty 450, 550, can go up to 19.5, but the very bed on the back could be a flatbed style, or it could be a pickup bed style. That doesn't make any difference. The flatbed probably should be more appealing, because there's less of it to look at. It doesn't really make that much difference, but I hesitate on saying "pickup," when some person might go, well, that's not a pickup, that's a different type. You know, if we just refer to the gross weight and non-commercial, that's the secret to it, non-commercial. That's a commercial vehicle right there. What we're talking about is non-commercial vehicles.
Mayor, members of the council, I don't disagree. When we're looking at a property and whether or not a vehicle is commercial, we do go to the definition of a commercial vehicle. And so this vehicle, for example, may exceed 22 feet in overall length, from front bumper to rear bumper. That would make it a commercial vehicle, without any other criteria having been met. So the GVRW on this, GWR on this, is about 12,000 pounds.
You did it again.
I did. Thanks for pointing it out, by the way. And it is clearly wrapped, and so it meets more than one of the criteria, but when we're talking about whether a vehicle is personally-owned or commercial for purpose, we do go to the definition. Now, in the code and how we enforce, we would allow personally-owned vehicles up to 19,500 GWR, and then commercial vehicles at 14,000, also 19,500, something less than 14,000. Is there consensus from council on the GWR for commercial vehicles allowed to be parked on a residentially-zoned property?
I support that. Other part to that is I would like us to identify if they're passenger vehicles wrapped, that we would allow no more than two. Because to me, a passenger vehicle, I've seen Corvettes wrapped before, wasn't one untracked at all.
Even vans and things like that, even regular pickup trucks.
Well, they're still considered passenger vehicles, right?
Branding and that sort of thing, but I agree.
Still considered a passenger vehicle, right?
Yeah, I agree. I think, I believe, I think it's clearly clear that we need to be allowed to. And actually, the one case that I was reminding Mr. St. John about started out as a code complaint, because somebody was aware that they weren't supposed to have that, but their husband and wife, you know, trying to make a living and support their family, and, you know, I don't think anybody's setting out to make it difficult for people to make a living, so we need to consider that. And I can understand if we don't want to allow two commercial vehicles and two RVs. I think that's reasonable. I don't know if there's a way to do that, but I do think we should allow two commercial vehicles. There's lots of families that have that, two branded vehicles that they use for work, for their business.
And Mayor, if I can, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, you started, so go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. If I can add, part of the definition, the primary, or the first part of the definition of a commercial vehicle, is that it's used in the furtherance of a commercial business. And so you can advertise on your personal vehicle, and it's still a personal vehicle, it's not a commercial vehicle if you're not using the vehicle in the furtherance of your commercial business. It's just advertising, if that makes sense.
Really splitting hairs now. Wait until you get into an accident and find out how quick you get sued. But...
I do have a problem with, and so I guess the compromise is accepting two commercial vehicles, or two RVs, but four of these, it just creates proliferation that nobody wants to see. I don't know how it can be addressed in code, but the whole problem is to reduce the multiplicity of vehicles in the driveway that are for commercial purposes, or recreational purposes, as a matter of fact, as well. And so that's the problem. And when we allow two for recreational and two for commercial, now we've got four vehicles in the driveway, as a minimum, and I don't think that's where we want to go. Thank you, Mayor.
And it's not the minimum, it would be the maximum we'd allow, and you're making the assumption that everybody's doing that. I don't think everybody would do that. I don't know a lot of people that have two cars wrapped. So you're sort of taking the extremes to make your point, and I don't know as though that's fair.
Well, I'm just taking a page out of your book, Mayor, where you cited an exception to the rule.
I'm usually on the other side as far as defense, not prosecution.
And so I figured turnabout was fair play. Thank you, Mayor.
I'm not interested in going back to the RV, but I would support two vehicles, personal cars, whatever you want to use to identify that. I have no problem with that.
So, Mayor, I have one more question. So I could have two commercial vehicles, two RVs, and probably one or two personal cars parked in my driveway? Oh, Mr. St. John, would that be legal?
I think her driveway's big enough.
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, if they were on approved surfaces and in approved parking areas, then yes.
Yeah, so I could, now we're back to the same problem that we've been dealing with all along. I've got six vehicles parked in my driveway slash front yard. I don't think we're solving anything, I think we're right back where we were. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Melnar?
I'm sorry, Councilmember Clark, but I disagree that we're not solving a problem. We're not going to, we're not trying to eliminate the legal parking spaces that a person has in their front yard. We're trying to limit what they park there, for example, RVs, and, I mean, I have a, one that comes to mind, that currently has 13 vehicles parked in the driveway, today, and every day. And I think we need to address that. And I think two RVs, as we've discussed, we compromise, two commercial vehicles that are, again, they're not going to be the big giant, they're not going to be box trucks, we're not going to allow that, period. These are going to be a passenger van, a Century 21 label on somebody's car, it's going to be things like that which we are calling "commercial," we're going to say that's okay. And yes, indeed, if they have, I mean, four parking spots is a lot in front of a house, but if they happen to have a double-long driveway, and they want to move their vehicles back and forth all day long, then yes, they could park additional vehicles on there. And I think that's an equitable compromise, because that is not the problem we're trying to address. I mean, I sent over to our presentation folks pictures of what we're trying to address, and they're atrocious. The things we're trying to address is when you have a front yard that is so overpacked with used, unoperable RVs, whatever you want to call it, and it makes it look like a junkyard. That's what we're trying to address. And that's, I think, what we're, what code currently, under its current toolbox, doesn't have all the tools to be able to enforce that. And as much as I'd like to be a little bit more restrictive, as Councilmember Clark has suggested, because I was on the Code Committee, and I recommended many of these things as well, as I've had input from citizens, I've come to realize that we can't regulate everything. We can't be so precise that we then limit other potential uses of people's property. But I think we are, with what we're doing, we are regulating the issue of over-parking and over-storage, with these exceptions that we've said we're going to allow. And I don't think allowing additional two is going to be a big problem.
Mayor, you know, it almost, and maybe this is too stupid and simplistic, but if I have a four-car-capacity driveway, maybe we should just say you can have four vehicles, as long as they're not commercial. If I have a six-car-capacity driveway, I can have six vehicles, as long as they're not commercial.
But you already can. As long as it's legal parking, you can. What we're doing by the commission is, we're regulating the commercial vehicles and the RVs, so...
Agreed.
You can still do what you're talking about, but we're putting limitations, which is what this commission was looking for.
Okay.
Am I incorrect? Do we have an agreement?
Mayor, I am still looking for consensus on the gross vehicle weight rating on these commercial vehicles.
Do we have that, 19.5? This is the short one, right?
Mayor, correct. This is the easy one. This exists in the zoning ordinance today, there's no revisions to this, we're simply moving it over to Chapter 24 of the General Code. We do enforce in sight under these provisions today. There are no recommended changes, other than we move this to Chapter 24 for ease of understanding for our community and for enforcement. And you can see that the vehicles under repair must be owned or leased by the occupant or homeowner. Basic service only, no major repairs unless you're in your enclosed garage or screened backyard, limit three per calendar year, and one at a time. And that is the way that it is written in the zoning ordinance today, again, simply moving it over to Chapter 24.
Good with that?
That concludes my presentation, thank you.
Should have done that one first. Hey, Ms. Bauer, are you still there?
I'm still here. Non-discrimination ordinance.
Mayor, members of the council, the last item for today's agenda for the workshop will be led by Brent Stotter, Deputy City Manager.
Today's presentation will be regarding the non-discrimination laws and ordinances. This afternoon, I'd like to walk you through a presentation on the recent history on the subject, and allow council to discuss and provide feedback. First, I want to walk you through the federal, state, and local actions on this subject. Over the last 50-plus years, Congress has enacted numerous federal laws protecting government and non-government workers from discriminatory employment practices. These include the Equal Pay Act, the Fair Labor Standard Act, both of which prohibit discrimination based on sex, Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964, which prohibits discrimination based on race, color, religion, sex, and national origin, the Pregnancy Discrimination Act, and the Family Medical Leave Act, which prohibits unlawful sex discrimination, including discrimination based on pregnancy, childbirth, and related medical conditions, the Age Discrimination in Employment Act, and the Americans with Disability and Rehabilitation Act of 1973. There are no current federal laws specifically prohibiting private businesses from discriminating and hiring and employment on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity. and hiring and unemployment on the basis of sexual orientation or gender identity. Federal workers had some protections based on sexual orientation, and on January 20th, 2021, President Biden signed an executive order which continued the protections against discrimination in hiring and employment of the civilian federal workforce and the federal contractors on the basis of gender identity and sexual orientation. Over the last decade or so, the United States Congress has looked at considering legislation, but none have passed as of today. In Arizona, state law prohibits discrimination in housing, employment, voting, and providing services and goods in public, in places of public accommodation based on race, color, religion, sex, age, national origin, ancestry, disability, and family status. However, current state law does not prohibit discrimination based on sexual orientation, gender identity, genetic characteristics, marital, or veteran status. The state does continue to operate under an executive order that was issued under Governor Napolitano back in 2003, which prohibits discrimination within the state's own employment practices based on a person's sexual orientation. Now, the topic of non-discrimination is not something new for this city or this council. The city's been very active in studying and discussing this topic, starting all the way back in 2014. In fact, the council has spent 13 public workshops and voting meetings discussing this topic in various ways. Over this time period, the council has also taken deliberative action to demonstrate a continued commitment to non-discrimination. I'll just list a few of those actions. You signed on to the One Community Unity Pledge. You directed the city manager to implement internal non-discrimination policies for its employees, contractors, and vendors. You hired a professional facilitator to hold four community conversations throughout the city, one dedicated solely for the business community, and three for citizens, to gauge how they felt about anti-discriminations and whether Glendale was seen as inclusive. The results of those meetings, they had engaged over 130 residents, business owners, and interested parties who attended the meetings, providing the council a broad spectrum of business and community input and public involvement to allow you to continue the discussion today. In 2017, this council formed the Human Relations Commission. You charged them with making recommendations on ways to encourage mutual respect and understanding among all people, to discourage prejudice and discrimination, and to support cultural awareness and unity of the community in all its diverse forms. The City of Glendale also designated an LGBTQ liaison to the city manager to serve as a resource for the public to elevate the voice of the LGBT community and to ensure the concerns of the community are being heard by executive management. Brittany Leslie, Contract Programs Manager in the City Attorney's Office, who's here today, currently serves as that liaison to city management. What this demonstrates is starting that in, in 2014, the council has been taking action. And while preparing for this presentation, I listened back to, to all of those previous meetings that are listed in your council report, and one of the things that I heard council members say repeatedly was that they wanted to take this issue in steps, which you've done over that period of time. And the next step would be the consideration of a non-discriminate, non-discrimination ordinance in Glendale. Eight cities in Arizona already have adopted a non-discrimination ordinance: Flagstaff, Mesa, Phoenix, Tempe, Tucson, Scottsdale, Sedona, and Winslow's. And each of them have their own approach to this issue. Very recently, in March, the City of Mesa adopted a non-discrimination ordinances, non-discrimination ordinance that is, that is recognized as taking an inclusive but balanced approach to this issue. For the rest of my presentation, I'd like to walk you through the highlights of the Mesa ordinance. First, the, the ordinance is meant to prohibit discrimination in employment, housing, and places of a public accommodation based on race, color, ethnicity, national origin, age, disability, religion, sex, sexual orientation, gender, gender identity, veteran status, marital status, genetic information, and familial status. All of those combined ensure that a diverse population has equal access to and treatment in goods, services, employment, and housing. Now, the Mesa ordinance applies to businesses with five or more employees, places of public accommodation, employers and their workplace, city employees and facility, and their facilities, city contractors, and our vendors. The ordinance also provides exclusions to the ordinance to a variety of groups and organizations and facilities, including businesses with less than five employees, the federal government, state agencies, and political subdivisions, religious, public, and charter schools, and this includes school facilities and extracurricular activities, including sports, religious corporations and organizations, which includes nonprofit religious corporations. These are businesses such as bookstores, faith-based shelters, faith-based adoption agencies. The ordinance also provides exclusions to public accommodations that provide beneficial pricing or policies to senior citizens, veterans, students, or individuals with disabilities. Excludes single-sex designated areas of a public accommodation, including single-sex gyms, restrooms, and facilities. It excludes single-sex sports and recreation leagues and programs. It excludes speech and expressive activities and the free exercise of religion when protected under the First Amendment. For example, expressive artists, other creatives will not be compelled to create work that violates their ethical, moral, or religious beliefs. Shifting to the administration and the implementation side of the Mesa ordinance, the ordinance is administered by the city manager or their designee. There's no additional funding that's required for this staffing, for this staffing model. The complaints must be filed within 90 days of an alleged violation with the city clerk. Once the manager is then, receives a formal complaint, they follow a prescribed resolution process. First and foremost, the ordinance allows the city manager to always address complaints through informal means such as notices and warnings. A first violation requires the manager to seek resolution through mediation and alternative means. I want to emphasize here that education, voluntary compliance, informal resolution, and mediation of conflicts are required on a first violation. And this happens before any civil citations. Also, any resolution that is achieved through mediation or these other means is not automatically considered an admission of having committed the allegation. Second and subsequent violations can also seek resolution through the mediation or alternative means, but also allows the ability then, on a second violation, to issue a citation. If a citation is issued, a violator can pay the citation or they can dispute it. If disputed, a hearing officer will handle all proceedings and make a determination upon the issuance of citation. For penalties, first violation can include a penalty or a fine up to $300, second violation a fine no less than 300, no more than 2,500, and a third, a fine no less than 600, no more than 2,500 per civil offense. The Mesa ordinance does include, did include a delayed effective date of 120 days to allow for public outreach and education. And lastly, in preparation for this workshop, the mayor did ask that staff place the Mesa version of a Glendale ordinance on tonight's council voting meeting agenda for council's consideration. You'll see that as item number 31 on the amended version of the agenda for tonight. And with that, Mayor and council will be happy to answer any questions.
I'd, I'd like you to verify if, if this was enacted in one of our vendors, we find that one of our vendors is not obeying this, they're, they're, they're not, basically not doing what this requires. Would we have the opportunity at that point to either cancel them or call them in and let them know that they would be, the contract would be canceled if, if they don't come in?
So, and I'll, if, City Attorney, if I say it wrong, but we all, because you had direct, this council had directed the city manager in previous years to include non-discrimination language within our own contracts, when we are, when the council's doing contracts, when we're doing business with vendors, we're already requiring to follow these type of practices, and that would be a violation of that contract. Am I, City Attorney, am I?
Mayor and council, that's correct.
Well, the answer is yes, we could. Okay. And then my second question, the effective date says 120 days to allow for public education. I would like to see this moved along, but I'd like to see that quicker than 120 days. I understand public education, but at the same time, I think the quicker that we enact this, and we could still allow for public education at the same time, I'd, I'd like to see that more like 60 days.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. And I, I too support moving this a little quicker than that. While I am a little surprised that we're moving that fast, but not complaining because this is long overdue, I really believe that this is going to, if, if this passes, that this will bring Glendale into a brighter place. We're going to respect people and, and promote inclusiveness, so I think it's really important. For me, it's, it's long overdue. However, as you said, the, the council has been discussing this for some time now, and it's time to act. I do want to take a minute to thank the Glendale Chamber and their task force that they put together in the last couple of weeks. They've, they've moved along a lot of dialogue, and I'm really thankful to have been part of those conversations. I hope that the city has reached out to them or will reach out to them just to get some of their thought processes. One question I have, though, is we had, with regard to employers, we have five or more. And, and in Scottsdale, they have zero to one employees. If we stayed with the five employees and more, that would eliminate quite a bit of businesses, at least in downtown and some of the surrounding areas. So I'm not opposed to the Mesa ordinance, I think it's, it's, it's spot on. So can you talk a little bit as to why we didn't choose to go to the zero-to-one employees?
So, Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, if staff, we didn't, the mayor had requested that we put a copy of the, that we work with the city attorneys often, and, and put a, a copy of the Mesa's version. Essentially what we did, if you'll notice, it's word for word, we switched out the word Mesa where it said Glendale, and we referenced the right title, title 30, or Chapter 34 in our own code instead of what the Mesa code, but we didn't change anything. So this would be an opportunity for the council to have these discussions, as the mayor mentioned, if, essentially what would happen on tonight's ordinance is the council would need to make a motion to amend or change something on that ordinance from the dais in order to make that change.
Thank you, Mr. Stotter, and Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I, I would be open for, for dialogue amongst the, my colleagues here on, because, let me just back up, let me just back up. I, I, I don't want to send a sense that I'm not excited about it, because I am. This is great that we are talking about this today. I'm in favor of an ordinance, one. Two, I'm comfortable with Mesa's ordinance that we have in front of us. The only question I have is, do we want to do it now rather than possibly pass an ordinance and then change it later to be from five and more employees in an employer to zero to one? So I would just ask my colleagues to, to think about that and consider it, but I'm okay with the City of Mesa's ordinance.
I, and I, I'll try to address that. We're changing it from last time, so, you know, I think if we enact it, at least we're showing that, you know, we're not stagnant, we're not stale, we're, we're moving along. But if you think of it this way, the largest city in the East Valley, largest city in the West Valley, going to have exactly the same legislation, maybe the other cities will start coming under that same, make it easier for people wherever they go in the valley to understand it's, it's, it's just easier to understand. It's not something different in, in Scottsdale, something different Mesa, and it could be. But wouldn't it be nice if we, if we sort of set the parameters on the east and west side and let everybody else figure out where they want to go from there?
Yeah, Mayor, no, I agree with you, 110%. I mean, we are not the largest city in the entire state, but we are, we are a very large city, and for us to be talking about this, absolutely, and I want to be one of those few cities who passes that. I, I just think that we shouldn't eliminate any businesses, and we're going to eliminate a significant amount if we stay at the five above. Otherwise, I'm not, I am not arguing at all that Mesa's is the ordinance we need to mirror, not at all, just that one item that I'd like to have dialogue on.
It does allow us in the future, we can, we can.
I, I understand.
And then, you know, as I, as I sat there and thought about it, I actually, 60 days, I'm thinking, well, why 60? Why not 30? I, I, that would be my recommendation to this council, is that we do this, and then we also do it with 30 days, not 60. Ray, you had?
Mine is kind of the opposite end of this. I, I, I'm, I'm happy to see this come forward, and I can support the Mesa version with one exception. With the limited time that we did have to review this, I did send it out to a resident and got feedback that on this small business, they would like to see it read, and again, five employees, that being, if they work 10 hours a week, is that considered an employee or is it full-time equivalent? And they would like that clarified, they would like that to be full-time equivalent, to say five full-time equivalent employees. And that would, again, given the conservative nature of, of many of my constituents, I, I think this is a compromise. And again, I think we need to recognize this is a little bit of a compromise, it's not, it's not as, I guess, I don't know what word to say, but some of the other city ordinances have much more strict requirements. I think this is a good compromise for the City of Glendale, and I would recommend that, and I could support it, and would be willing to make that motion this evening, that we change it to, to clarify that it's five full-time equivalent. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Like Councilmember Aldama, and as, as Councilmember Milner said, I too are happy to see this day come. I can support the, the draft ordinance based on the Mesa version as is written and proposed. I would agree with the mayor that I'd like to see this go into effect in 30 days, just like all of our ordinances, and that naturally, not unlike our texting, driving while texting, you know, there's a education period involved, and, and, and that's just fine, but I do think it ought to go into effect in 30 days, so let's move on with it. Thank you.
Right, thank you, Mayor. And, you know, I, I, I remember, we've, this, we've, we've had many, many discussions about this, I think, over the, since 2014, when I first got on the council, I think it might have been my very first voting meeting when we signed the unity pledge and went outside and got our picture taken, when we signed the unity pledge. So, I mean, to, to take this in steps, I think, was the right thing for our city. And one of the things that I had, had questioned before was the, the lack of consistency, I felt like wasn't really business-friendly, and so that's one of the reasons why I like, I, I've, I've read several of these ordinances. I thought the Mesa ordinance, especially with some of the exclusions that they offer for religious corporations, religious public and charter schools, public accommodations that provide pri, beneficial pricing to senior citizens, veterans, and students, there's, the, the exclusions, I think, allow for the flexibility that we need to allow in our community for programs that are religious-based, that are, you know, special accommodations and pricing for senior citizens and veterans and things like that. I'm fine with the, the less than five employees, and I don't know about the full-time, just because, you know, 20 hours, 25 hours, 30 hours, I mean, you know, if you're an employee, you're an employee of the business, whether it, whether you work 20 hours or, I think 32 hours is, makes you full-time, I believe, I'm not certain about that. But I'm fine with the five employees, and I, and I don't know why we would wait 120 days. I mean, we've had, we've did the community conversations, we've, we've engaged the public quite, quite a bit already on this issue, and I, I, I like the consistency of using an, an ordinance at another, the, well, the, the largest city in the East Valley use, I like the consistency of having something that businesses know, basically, it's already out there what, what we're, what we're talking about adopting. So I think the time is right, I'm, I'm ready to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I support the Mesa ordinance as drafted and presented to this council. I think we can tinker with it, but then we're not being consistent, as was stated by the mayor, in drafting something that is identical to the largest East Val, East Valley city. So I would not be in favor of changing anything other than, I too believe 120 days is too long, and as Councilmember Turner suggested, I don't know why it just doesn't go into effect after 30 days as all of our other ordinances do. So I support it as written, I don't want to change it other than to make it happen more quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I just want to be clear, when I mentioned the, the less than five or zero to one, every city that's passed their ordinance is zero to one, except for Mesa, and that was, that was a compromise that they had dialogue on, and said, if that's what it takes, then let's do it. So that, that. that they had dialogue on, and said, if that's what it takes, then let's do it. So that's, I truly believe we should have it all across the city, no matter what size. But hey, this is a start, and I'm not going to argue. I think we're good.
I didn't hear consensus on the, yeah, so do we have a consensus on as written? Thirty days.
So, yeah, so Mayor, members of the council, I'll work with the city attorney. We'll prepare a motion for you to just simply strike that language from the dais as a motion tonight. And then with that, with that not in there, it would just be the normal enactment date that our ordinances would have in any normal voting meeting.
Oh, for that, for that, would you give that to Councilmember Aldama?
I would be happy to.
Wanting to make that amendment?
Yes, sir.
Okay, very good. Okay, what else? That's it. City manager's report.
Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of quick items for your notice. As we mentioned, you saw where on May fourteenth, the Epic Crystal Lagoon Project received or did close on all the property needed for that development. Kind of tied to that was also that was a commitment of their financing. So that's all moving forward. Pay attention to your inbox. We'll be having an invite going out to the council here shortly, announcing the groundbreaking time. And we hope to have that, we think that'll be in the second week of June. They're just tightening it down right now to get all the different corporations that are going to be part of this project here. So we'll make sure you have an opportunity to come to what I think is going to be an exciting groundbreaking. One of the issues we've been finding through economic development, and it shouldn't be a surprise necessarily, but we're having real struggles, our business community is, with finding workforce and eligible employees. And so that's really been a concern as we start pitching different projects that are contemplating moving to either the Valley or to Glendale. We're hearing that a lot. And just want to let you know, we're working, you know, internally with the Arizona At Work Project, which is a local not-for-profit organization, or in addition to a local not-for-profit organization called Career Connections. And so we are working on that, and we'll provide you some feedback in terms of where that's going. But this is a great example of our economic development team trying to be proactive. Would like to officially notice the council at this time that we have received an unsolicited offer for city property. And consistent with our city policy regarding disposition of property, we placed an item on the executive session to be able to discuss this with the council. And my last item is that we did get notification this afternoon that we have received funds, the first half of the ARPA funds. And we received, this afternoon, we received our first installment, which is twenty-nine million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, three-hundred-and-five. And what we still don't know today are the, kind of all the eligibility requirements. Staff is working very hard. I know Levi is working very hard to provide a report back to the council. Once we have a clear understanding of what, you know, what that looks like, we'll immediately schedule a time to sit down with the council and discuss kind of your vision. But that money has been received. As a reminder, half will come in during this current fiscal year, and the other half will come in sometime early next year. And with that, that concludes my report.
Good news, thank you. City attorney's report.
No report, thank you.
Better news, thank you. Council items of special interest. Council has the opportunity to indicate topics that they'd like to have discussed by this council in the future, starting with Councilmember Aldama. Have you?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. I have two. First one is, I'd like to ask staff, and I believe it's our Parks and Recreation Team that this would go to, now I can answer any questions. I'd like to see the adaptive bowling program start up again. It ended, I believe, before the pandemic, and we haven't gotten started with it. But we have a lot of citizens who use that program for developmental skills, and it's important for us to have that. Then second, this will come, maybe surprises some, a few, but Catlin Court lies in my district and is an important piece of our community. And for many years, the city has promoted Catlin Court as a business, as a retail district. And I've read it thoroughly over the last couple of weeks, line by line, and I'm not convinced that the amendment that is going through the city manager's office and the attorney's office is the only amendment that we should have. So I'm asking our city manager and our attorney, and I'll sit with them both, to bring a second option to the Planning Commission and to the public meetings that you're having. After reading the PAD, we have promoted that place as a retail district, and there is some verbiage in there that I want to share, but we have a team that can draft a second option, and I'd like to discuss that and then bring that back for the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mayor.
You, Councilmember Clark?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Melner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Tomachoff?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to get an update on the Business Support Services Manager, just to see, you know, how that position's progressing and what type engagements that the managers had with the business community and how they've, you know, engaged and assisted the business community, that was, whether the position's working out as we thought. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Thank you, Mayor. As we're all aware, street racing and reckless driving has become a second pandemic in our community. It's now, I think, become the number-one complaint and concern that I'm hearing from residents. It's the speeding, reckless driving, and street racing. So I understand that in March, Phoenix approved an ordinance that imposes a $600 fine and allows police to impound or immobilize for thirty days any vehicle found in violation of the street racing and reckless driving ordinance statute. So I would like staff to bring forward for our discussion a ultimately proposed ordinance that would mirror Phoenix's ordinance. And I think it's appropriate for the safety and peace of our neighborhoods, and also because if the largest city in the valley is cracking down on it, and we know where it's going to head, and it's going to be out to the surrounding cities, so we need to be in front of it as much as possible. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Have nothing. With that, can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Motion, Councilmember Aldama, Councilmember Clark, go into executive session. Executive session, is there any discussion? None, all in favor, vote aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, vote nay. Your ayes have it, do have it, the motion carries. Council meeting is recessed. We'll meet just down.